And I don't know how soon we can get up and running. It's gonna have to be a little.
He was gonna do it, I know. You were gonna submit this for next week, right?
Next week.
Well, here's the issue. We gotta get out of the office.
I know.
And we have something set up where probably by mid-September, we can have them lining up and running in emergency management. But I need things like, extra things like, we're gonna buy this extra.
How you doing?
In 2025.
Well, now you're gonna sign it up?
No, I need to sign it up.
It was going better, so I.
This is our August 27th workshop in preparation for the regular August 28th meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Franco.
Okay. Anybody have to go to the top? Anybody have other pending pressing business that we can do that? No problem at all. Doc, our protocol here is just who you are, where you're from, and make sure you speak loud and clear enough so the computer can pick up and transcript your words.
Sounds good. Larry D'Amico from the Coroner's Office. I have three or four things I would like to run by you today. Kind of an update where we're at with the morgue. In a couple weeks, we'll be sending out bids for the work. Probably looking at May, June of '25 to complete the office and the morgue facilities. So, we're kind of moving along. We have an issue with our cooler. We had a bid for the cooler of about $28,000. The way the plans are looking, probably we wouldn't need that done till 2025. Probably several months before the completion of the building. Here's the problem. There's new requirements coming out by the federal government. It's gonna change how coolers are made and how the refrigerant is used. And it's gonna increase the cost of the cooler by about 40%. So, we can order this and pay for it in '24, at the end of '24, to preserve that price and have it built in '25, in which we'd have to pay upfront for it. Or we'd have to pay about 40% more by ordering it in the first quarter of '25. My thoughts were, why would we pay 40% more? Why don't we just go ahead and purchase it early? If that's okay with everybody.
Yes.
I agree. That's a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer.
I agree.
And if it's all right with the auditor, if we have it now, if we find it now, let's do it now.
Trumbull County Auditor Martha Yoder certainly saved money. I'm willing to spend a little money. So, Christie and I will work with you on getting that together before the end of the year.
Just make sure, Doc, I caution you that we, that it'll work and we grandfathered somehow, and we won't buy it, and then all of a sudden, they tell us, you have to upgrade for this X number of fee in '25, and then we're actually paying the same or more.
I've already talked to them about that. The big question's gonna be, do we get it early? Do we get delivery of it early? Or do we just have them build it later? And we'll see depending on how the pricing goes. But, yeah, once it's built, then we're kind of grandfathered according to this manufacturer, so. Second issue is x-ray equipment. You know, our morgue requires x-ray equipment. We've, for the longest time, used Trumbull Hospital. Obviously, that's not gonna work anymore, so we have to provide x-ray equipment for the new morgue. By far, the most costly way to do it is to buy our own equipment. Pays itself off in about three and a half years, so that's kind of a no-brainer also. I was planning on buying this equipment again in the first quarter of '25. But with what's going on at Trumbull, it's not safe or good for the county to keep our morgue where it is. But we're gonna have to move to a temporary location until May of '25. I need to have x-ray facilities at the new temporary location. Again, it's way more cost-effective to buy this equipment early and start using it rather than paying almost triple to have the x-rays done by an outpatient facility. So, I'd like to buy, purchase the x-ray equipment now and use it in temporary morgue and then just move it to the new morgue.
And Doc, the temporary morgue will be at EMA?
Yeah, we were looking at sites, and it's a very nice place to put it, the EMA building. It wouldn't take very much, in fact, minimal, to modify it. Mr. Hickey was able to get a confirmation from the state to use their cooler. Question is, how long will we be able to use it? If we could use it all the way through May, it would save us a ton of money on a cooler and also allow us to then use the EMA building. It's actually gonna be minimal cost. If we can get the cooler for zero dollars, everything else would be well included.
And there's no issue with using the EMA office, Mr. Hickey?
Not the office.
Well, the.
Right, yeah. It's the ultimate.
Yes.
So, what we're looking at is, it's gonna take about three or four weeks to set this morgue up, which is why I can't wait too much longer. Because if they all of a sudden shut that building down and we don't have access to our equipment, then I'm gonna be behind the eight ball with the month to get ready. So, best to kind of go ahead with it now, get everything set up, then that, the building then, Trumbull doesn't matter with us.
Just to point out, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. I've been working on the situation at 911, which I'll talk about afterwards. But one of the things, and I don't know if this applies completely to the hospital, but the maintenance person from Hillside has said that if the hospital doesn't de-close, they will keep someone in the building for an additional 30 days. So, at least for Hillside, I know that to be true. I can verify to find out if it extends to the rest of the building, which helps us a little bit in buying some time.
Well, the way it's working right now is, our forensic pathologist is looking, he's on vacation in the middle of September.
Mm-hmm.
So, it all kind of falls very nice where we can shut the old morgue down, take two or three days to get the new morgue set up. So, the transition about the second week of September, looks like it'd be best for everybody involved. If it's okay to go ahead with that.
And not to mention, I mean, if we were, we were gonna buy the equipment anyway. We're gonna buy the x-ray machine anyway, so why not help do it sooner so it pays for itself rather than do it later? If we can have the facility to use, I mean, it's, we were gonna buy it anyway.
Correct. And the payoff is about three and a half years. So, to start that eight months early, it's just, it's just gonna benefit the county rather than paying for it.
Correct.
Senator Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Both this and the cooler are an inevitable expense. So, it's, if we can do some things to, first of all, make it easier on us, on you, as we try to move forward with whatever happens with the hospital. And also, save ourselves a little bit of money. Both are good.
Now, the only downside to this whole setup is, if the state doesn't allow us to use their cooler to May, then that, a cooler truck, Mr. Hickey, is what it can run us how much?
I'm waiting. I was hoping to have that number, a firm number, but you're probably working on, but I have a good feeling we can stretch out a free one from the state well into next.
So, that'd be the only downside, is if the state says, well, if we can get our cooler back, then that's a big increase in cost for the morgue. But if not, then the numbers are very good for us.
I'm ready to proceed with the purchases, if you will.
Right. So, we're gonna work with, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. We're gonna work with the coroner and Lisa to get this on the agenda for next week, though.
Last thing. Kind of, we've passed around the idea of the new morgue. And we wanna use this as a revenue source for the county. We have our own forensic pathologist. Do we wanna start doing autopsies for surrounding counties? Bring in money for our county. If that's an option, and if people want to explore that, I'd like to start looking into that idea. Don't know how much kind of revenue we're talking, and I don't know if it, what is significant for the county that you want me to proceed.
I did, I did get a call from Mahoning County Commissioners, and I saw one in person. And I've had two of the three that approached me and said, hey, we need to work together with our forensic pathologists. We need your guy. You know, we, let's put our counties together and get this done. Now, our fear that we talked about during budget hearings was, they probably have a lot more business than what we have, and we want you here, and we want our Trumbull patients. First, you know, we wanna make sure you're not bogged down in Mahoning County stuff. And then, our people up here are waiting weeks and weeks and weeks because of that. If there's a way you can make it happen that way, I think it makes sense. And then, if there's revenue sharing from Mahoning, or, like you said, a way for us to make income instead of them sending people to Cleveland or whatever they're doing with them now, if they can come to us and we can make it work for your department. I mean, you know your department better than anybody. You know, what's extra staffing you need, what extra type of stuff? If the math looks like it works, I have no problem with it. But you have to present a plan somehow to us on where the math is gonna work, and we're not gonna be paying or financially hurt because of the increase.
I would also add that, you know, a lot of the neighboring counties that don't have forensic pathologists that send theirs away to Cuyahoga County or to Summit County. Maybe we can recruit some of that business. And, you know, that's the idea, is just regionalizing it basically, and making it so that it's a revenue stream. I mean, that was part of the reason why we went, why we looked at getting this morgue, is.
Well, here's, here's kind of, there's a autopsy, then there's an autopsy. I'll give you an example. A homicide autopsy, multiple gunshots, is a, would be a money loser for us. Very time-consuming thing. It would cost a lot of staff hours. Ideally, we don't want to be doing those kind of autopsies. So, how do I put this correctly? We wanna select the proper counties that we wanna work with that aren't gonna be high homicide counties. And Mahoning probably wouldn't be somebody we would wanna partner with in that situation.
Could we just make the stipulation, we'll take these ones for convenience for them, save them a little money to travel to Cleveland? But anything level whatever and up or whatever has to go as normal?
I can approach it that way. I can tell you, having been a surgeon, is most people don't wanna do it that way. Most people wanna do it, take our good and our bad. I can approach Mahoning County with some of their less time-consuming autopsies. Or, or, and/or, we can pursue counties that don't have such a high penetrating trauma rate where we're actually burning dollars to get service for that.
Not to mention, when we brought on the forensic pathologist, this is what we envisioned. Because, I mean, he is, and he does phenomenal work, but he's one of the highest-paid people in Trumbull County. If we can capture some of that business from Portage, Geoga, some of the other neighboring counties that don't have a forensic pathologist, that normally would send them to Cuyahoga County, I think that's what we have to do.
And then, the question becomes, how do we structure this? So, the way I saw it was, we, we charge an X amount of dollars, and we pay the friends, our forensic pathologist part of that, and the morgue part of that. This would be additional work for him, which he would expect to be reimbursed for while we do it.
Sure.
But then, the county would, would make a lot too on the morgue. There's also the option of employing on a 10-99 basis, another pathologist, just to keep the morgue moving, where we could have a couple different counties with a couple different pathologists. There's other people in the area that might wanna also work for us. So, the more we have the morgue open and moving and running, the better it is for the county. So, I'm kind of looking at what, how we wanna do it, but possibly employing, you know, more than one on the side to do extra work.
Does it make sense financially?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And speed too. You know, that's something too, that we provide good service for families waiting for closure, that they're not waiting six weeks, eight weeks. Police departments aren't waiting months to get the results back like they do sending them off. That, that can help with the case. It's gonna help with the evidence. It can help with everything. We don't wanna sacrifice the timeframe that we serve our customers if we can avoid doing that. And I know bringing on extra staff would need to be, would need to be done with that.
Well, the idea would be, we don't charge, change our quality of work at all. Here's the comparison. And this isn't what we can offer surrounding counties. When we send a case out to Cuyahoga, we're essentially signing the death certificate about four months later. We're signing the death certificate in our county four weeks later. So, it's a month versus four. And that's, that's what would be attractive to other counties.
A lot of times, Cuyahoga or Summit or all these other counties aren't even taking.
Yes.
You know, they're overwhelmed as it is, so.
So, even if we change the same, charge the same cost as Cuyahoga for the autopsy, there's a decrease in cost for travel time and shipping the bodies. There's a turnaround time in four weeks instead of four months. So, we can offer this kind of service, if everybody's open to be exploring that.
Absolutely.
Make it make sense on paper financially, and I'm in with it.
Good.
Absolutely. Thank you, Doc.
Hey, Doc, why are you still here, though? Just a quick question, because we've been studying the figures with this hospital stuff. Trumbull last year had like 625 overdose emergency room visits. You know how many, how we are as far as deaths, opiate-related compared to past years? Are we trending up, trending down, stable, as far as your opinion?
As far as this year?
Yeah.
Um, the last I saw the stats, which was about three weeks ago, we were running at about half pace. We're in '23. So, we're way down. Now, our suicides are up. Our overdoses are way down.
That's important, too, for the Trumbull situation.
Yeah.
Because, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, is one of the aspects of this is possibly using opiate money and also ARPA money, and the lack of a behavioral health facility if Trumbull closes is, it plays into that and it plays into the eligibility. So, absolutely, the suicides being up is also helpful for us to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Doc.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that needs to go to the.
Since it ha, it ties in with what the coroner just talked about, would you like me to go ahead and talk about 911 now, or, and the contingencies with that? Or would you like for me to wait till later?
Um, and that, is that in relation to Hillside and all that?
Yes.
Let's just wait and do that, do the whole hospital thing at once.
All right, that's fine.
We could burn through this pretty quick.
All right.
You have the damn thing. Let's burn through this. It's the damn thing, too. Just because the media's here, they're gonna wanna hear that. You got involved with. Okay. Dispense with reading the minutes. Special minute, or meeting of the special, meeting, approve the bills, transfer monies.
All right. Let me get my, I'm sorry. I have a lot of papers today. Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, um, transfer of money. First one is auditor, the $500,000 is just the third quarter casino transfer that we do. Planning Commission is administration reimbursement. And Sheriff is the jail pharmacy contract. Move on to additional appropriations. Commissioners is the highway engineer office update project. The increase in vehicle and properties insurance, insurance, I'm sorry. ARPA is the $491, $491,000. The increase in utilities costs, the Ag Building Grant, the Highway Engineer Garage. And then, the Transportation Improvement District, as we know, we moved that over into the funding structure of the county, and that was a payment for legal fees. And then, transfer appropriations, number six. Auditor's Office, increase in supplies, increase in foreign judge expense. Yes, we get to pay that out of our account. The Board of Developmental Disabilities, an increase in contract rates and some items that weren't anticipated. The Board of Elections, an increase in costs for the election. The building inspection, increase in telephone costs. The Commissioners, an increase in public defenders costs. Common Pleas, increase in various costs, supplies, trussing services, equipment maintenance. Municipal Courts, increase in criminal prosecution costs. The Planning Commission is computer monitor. Bob's not here. All right. It's been a long couple of weeks, Bob. And I'm sorry that I didn't see your handsome face. You may proceed. I proceed. That's my hobby now.
Bob Meyerano, Sanitary Engineers. The $1,200 is for additional diesel fuel for our Deer Trail Pump Station. The $12,817 is to a vendor called Con for GIS equipment. The $5,000 is for additional copier charges for sanitary engineers. And we have sewer repairs with Lee's Excavating Contracted Services. We're gonna transfer $50,000 for the rest of the year.
Back to me, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. The Sheriff, there's a backup battery, and then Sheriff Tag, increase in investigative costs.
All right, thank you. Receive unfiled the May, June, and July financial reports for Trumbull County Tourism Bureau. Beth, anything of significance?
Lodging taxes down a little bit right now. It's about five to 10% this year. So, we do have that. Our Board has done budget revision and approved that in July. And other news, the Board's been working on our strategic plan as well as bylaw changes. That'll be coming to you guys in the next few months. We were just told yesterday, we're finalists for four state awards with the Ohio Travel Association. And we're doing two upcoming photo shoots, one this Friday and then one. Oh, and more, most importantly, this weekend, for those of you living on the east side of the county, it's the Route 7 yard sale. We saw, in total, last year, we saw about 20,000 people along the route. And about 10,000 of those are actually people coming from outside of the area. Right now, we're at about 61 registered sales, and then an additional 10 that have registered specifically for Yankee Lake. It runs Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and we do have electronic signage out there. But if you're driving on Route 7, please be careful, because we have seen people walking across, running across the street. Those yard sales are dotted up and down through and up to Ashtria. So, from Hutter to Ashtria. And there's still a lot of people, which is perfectly fine. We don't charge anybody to register. But there are still a lot of people that don't register, so you can expect increased traffic. We have, early on, let the Sheriff's Department know as well as 911, just to give them the update that that is. And if you're looking for bargains, you can get them on Route 7 this weekend.
And on a side note, I ran into a couple guys that were from around Ashland County. And they heard I was from Trumbull County, and they, right away, they started talking like they knew, like they're from here. And I said, you guys from where? They said, no, we're the football junkies. They said they look for the best game in the state, and they get a group of buddies to travel to big rivalry games, no matter what county they're in. They'll go to Cleveland. They'll go to Columbus or wherever. So, it made me think, you know, maybe in our tourism thing, somehow, Friday night that the victim, where many of us go to whatever high school, even if they have kids or not, go to the big game. And I know there's people locally that, that look for the big rivalry, even though they may not have went to that school.
Right.
Um, if it's two undefeated teams, or it's something big, just food for thought. It made me think, I'm like, wow, these guys come up. They said they come up, they go to the game, stay overnight, they find a local bar afterward, and people go, and that's like their group of friends thing to do. And it says usually four, sometimes more guys. But it was a non-traditional type of tourism that made me think it breaks something up here.
We're starting to take pictures as people come into our office and post. So, last week, we had two brothers that are coming up, visiting their grandmother in Nile. They were staying for seven days. They were very passionate about history and the historic aspects of our area. And actually, we're talking like, it's way cheaper to live here, and look at all this great food you have. So, I mean, people, they're younger. They were in their 30s. So, we have a lot of great stories, but now we're starting to document that. Take a picture, post it on Facebook, and give a little bit of background, why they're here, to let our, our local residents know that, you know, the different types of visitors.
All right. Eight, authorized Trumbull County Court to advertise steel bids for railroad crossing removal project. Includes elimination of three. Bendig-Levittskirk Road, Bailey-Innerson Road in Braysville Township, Yale South Road in Warren Township. Being paid for by grant from the Ohio Rail Development Commission. Good. Incurred Trumbull County Engineer closes following railways, York Street on Monday, August 26th through Friday, September 27th. That's in Green Township. Ten, incurred Trumbull County Engineer grant right-of-way permit for Village Energy Cooperative. Special annual supplier fleet permit, Wim Farms HF Everett Gas and Oil. For personnel action for employment of Ms. Bailey Dible, the position of Deputy Dog Warden with the Trumbull County Dog Kennel. No earlier than Tuesday, September 3rd. Pursuant the job posting, June 21st through July 1st. And recommended by Ms. Goss, and successfully completed drug screen and background checks. So, that's good. Thirteen, approved the personnel action for the transfer of Mr. Colin King from the position of plant maintenance worker, the position of custodial worker, actually going down and paid $7 an hour in response to the job posting. Bob?
Um, that's actually mine. Um, I would choose, I would prefer not to talk about the reason why he's taking this job on the record. We can talk about that in executive session if you would wish. But I do not wanna bring that up in a public meeting to benefit the employee and protect the employee. With that being said, yes, we have a gentleman who is leaving the Sanitary Engineers Department to an open custodian position, $24.93 bid. He is the only person who bid on this job. And, yeah, we're still able to keep him within the county. That's the goal, so.
Very good.
So, Alex Steven Jonesy-Bush, Human Resources Department. Sorry. Sorry.
Don't let it happen again.
Sorry.
Approved the personnel action for the appointment of Mr. Daniel Probonic, the position of Assistant Water Superintendent with Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Department, effective August 29th. Pay range 10, pursuant to authorized job posting, and has passed. Pay range ten, pursuant to authorized job posting, and has passed required educational background, pre-employment. Uh, he's given eighteen months to get his licenses, so this is a new hire?
Bob Meyerano, sanitary engineers, um, this is the third time we've had this position posted.
Was this particularly one of them?
No.
He was not. Um, probably six weeks ago, we had hired another individual, he withdrew before he started. Um, Gary, myself, and Scott, and Ron, um, Watson interviewed Mr. Probonik. He came in, spent a morning riding around with our water superintendent, and, uh, we figured we'd give him a chance.
Commissioners, this is Alex Steven Johnson-Bush, this is to backfill Ron Watson again. So this was the gentleman that we had, we had had somebody who had dropped out after we did the interview process, all of that. He dropped out last minute, again, I remind everybody, and there is a reason I'm saying this, which obviously is not for you two, but there is a reason. Um, this is a position that requires a civil engineer, we, it, they require, they're required to be an engineer, they're required to obtain certain licensures. This is a very important position, uh, it's an external candidate, it's non-bargaining, um, and it's very important to our county. So I mean, somebody that we need to get ASAP training before Mr. Watson retires.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay, establish the creation of Fund Four Fifty-three for the Pendeling Gilmore Sanitary Sewer Project, being owned as Fund Number Four Fifty-three. Used by the sanitary engineer to go to wastewater collection system. Initial funding will be provided by five thousand transferred from the Water Service Capital Reserve Fund Four Seventy-seven.
I'll take it, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer. Uh, commissioners, this is the second portion of the Meadowbrook Project. And, uh, the nomination to the W P C L F is September the eighteenth. And, uh, it's just proper to create a project fund for, for all of these projects. And so we just put a token amount into that project fund, and we said we need, um, uh, acquire an easement, or, uh, just some other small expense that may be incurred as part of that project.
Okay. Stop the resolutions declaring the necessity of constructing the Meadowbrook Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project, County Project Twenty-nine S ninety-seven, for the Trumbull County Combined Sanitary Sewer District. And there is a hearing of objections on Thursday, October third, at seven PM.
All right, uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh, commissioners, I've been working on this here for the past week, putting together this public hearing. As you know, this is a consent decree project, and it's gonna be, um, as far as not being a wastewater treatment plant, you know, you have pretty of a treatment plant, but as far as its water, sewer extension project, this will be the largest one we've, uh, undertaken to date. Um, we're looking at a total cost of about seventeen point six million dollars for this project. Uh, we have grants covering a significant portion of that. And, um, anyway, it's time for the public hearing, and, um, Thursday, October third is the, is the time, is the day for it.
And this is when commissioners have to be at, right?
Yes.
Okay, seventeen. Resolution authorizing Denny Malloy, president of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the county of Trumbull for planning, designing, construction of the Bizetta and Mecca wastewater treatment plant nutrient reduction project, number eight, S twenty.
Yeah, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, uh, yeah, commissioners, we need to, uh, access the water pollution control loan fund or funds in order to construct the project. Last week, we did it, we already awarded the contract, but in order for us to, uh, get some W P C L F funds to help pay for this, we need to put in an application. And this is basically just, uh, boilerplate language, uh, in order to allow, uh, Mr. Malloy to sign the application.
Can you hear that more?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, eighteen, resolution authorizing the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, apply for, accept, and enter into P Y twenty twenty-five Water Pollution Control Loan Fund Agreements for repairing and replacing home sewage treatment systems, H S D S.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning. Funny, but.
Yes, please. Turn the button up.
Hello. Can you hear me now? Karaoke. Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning Commission, we are applying for these funds, um, this is the fourteenth year that we apply for these funds on behalf of Trumbull County. We secured almost three million dollars, including local money, local matching funds to assist homeowners to replace or build home sewage treatment systems. Funds can also be used for connecting sanitary laterals to the household who've been identified as having failed systems. And so, we work with the sanitary engineer, the combined health district, and the chief building official, to carry out this program each year. And we'll apply for a hundred and fifty thousand as we do, we always ask for the maximum amount, so hopefully the state will release conditional funds. But it's typically been a hundred and fifty thousand.
All right, uh, Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, Julie, are, are we able to use some of these for connections this year? I know we were blocked out of that the last year or two.
Yes, so this contract will be awarded in, most likely, April or May of twenty twenty-five. At that time, up to half of the hundred and fifty thousand can be used for lateral connection.
Okay.
And it is based on criteria, they have to be an owner occupant, and they have to meet the HHS income cut.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Okay, nineteen, request that the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners come enough to ten thousand dollars from the general fund as part of the required loan match for the Clean Ohio Green Spades Conservation Grant Application being submitted by Trumbull County Planning Commission on behalf of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners to the Ohio Public Works Commission portal honor before September thirteenth.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning, this is related to the conversation we had at last week's meeting regarding our effort to apply for funding on behalf of a homeowner who was interested in selling their homes to, um, be in compliance with the FEMA audit and the issues they have with currently experiencing flooding. So this is part of the larger project that the commissioners funded with A R P funds. And so we are working through the budget process to include those funds as local matches. And we discovered that we would need a little bit of assistance from the general fund. And, um, so we're requesting that commissioners support that, so that we can submit this application on or before September third.
Thank you. And twenty, receiving place unfilled the July twenty-four monthly operating financial report for Trumbull County Transit and the Western Reserve Transit Authority submitted by Mike Salomay, Mike.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, this is Mike Salomay, Trumbull County Transit Administrator, this is a report, uh, first report to be on the Trumbull County Transit ridership through July twenty twenty-four, tomorrow's meeting. In July, there were no, uh, there were two complaints in July, and we are up to five total complaints for the year. Uh, through trips for July of twenty twenty-four were three thousand three hundred and three. Trips for July of twenty twenty-three were two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four. Total trips for twenty twenty-four so far have been twenty-two thousand eight ninety-seven. Total trips in twenty twenty-three were twenty-one thousand, uh, five thirty-five. Trips broken down, so sixty-five and older are thirteen thousand six hundred and thirteen trips. Under sixty-five, I mean, up to sixty-five and sixty-sixty-five is one thousand four hundred and seventy-five trips. So there's a total of fifteen thousand eighty-eight senior trips that we've done so far.
So, I have a question, Mike.
Yeah.
You've got sixty-five and older and total senior trips.
Right.
What are we combining there, or?
Thirteen, six, one, three, and a fourteen, seven, seventy-five.
But they're still under sixty-five, or?
No, they're, I've, I've got it written down, so it's under, it's supposed to be sixty to sixty-five.
Okay.
That's what they should say.
So they still qualify for the rest?
Right, the sixty to sixty-five.
Gotcha.
And then the total senior trips are fifteen, total disabled trips are seven thousand eight oh nine. So in twenty twenty-three, we had done, we did thirty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven trips. Projected for twenty twenty-four is thirty-nine thousand two fifty, so definitely will be seeing, should be seeing an increase this year with the same vendors that we have. Comfort Caravan has received two grants for, uh, the senior population, these grants help bridge the gap when a client does not have, uh, time to get registered, uh, through our service, cause, uh, for the first medical appointment. So the first grant that they received was twenty-five thousand, a staging grant, this grant has been depleted as of July. Uh, they have provided three hundred and fifty-three trips, uh, through this grant. This is the grant, as you know, that Diane from the senior lobby was, was getting through to them. The other grant that they have is sixteen thousand, uh, from, uh, direction homes. This grant is referred to as Title Three, um, they have provided three hundred and twenty-nine trips for a cost of eleven thousand eight hundred and eighty. And this grant has a balance of four thousand one hundred and twenty. Now, you're gonna, you see a discrepancy in numbers in the sense, three hundred and fifty-three thousand trips for twenty-five thousand. Reason is, majority of those trips, they were going out of county, they were covering trips that. The other ones did not, because the other one was only local in county, but they were covering for people that maybe couldn't afford to go to Cleveland, things of this nature. So that's why there's only three hundred and fifty trips. Uh, year to date, there's been six denials.
Mike, uh,
Yeah.
The first grant they got, the twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
That it's been expended, they provided three hundred and fifty-three trips, so that's seventy bucks a trip?
Correct. Yeah, I just figured that out, yeah. Yep, it's actually a little bit more than that, but yeah. Yep, so now, switch gears over to W R T A. Uh, no complaints with W R T A. Uh, Route seventy-four and seventy-three, they both started in the middle of March. But first full months were April of twenty twenty-four. The total trips through July were nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven. Through, in twenty twenty-four, the West has done three thousand nine hundred and nine, three thousand nine hundred and twenty trips. The Elm Road did five thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven. And the Horn Express has done over a hundred thousand, a hundred and nine thousand one ninety-two. And that's huge, because these are people going back and forth between our county and the other county. So in July, um, the West did one thousand two thirty-four, Elm did one thousand six hundred and fifty-one, and the Warren Express did seventeen seven seventy-three. So these routes have steadily increased since March or April. So the West has almost doubled from six hundred and fif, six hundred and fifty-five trips in April to one thousand two hundred and thirty-four trips in July. The Elm Road has gone from one thousand fifty-five in April to sixteen fifty-one. So it's been a steady increase with these routes, people are getting more familiar with them.
Steady increase, but trips don't necessarily mean people.
No, it could be one person.
One person can ride it many times.
Correct, correct.
Un, unlike ours that are just individual rides, you know?
Right.
Um, this is a little, but nevertheless, we are seeing a little bit of an uptick.
No, we're definitely in the, now, in regards to the past, um, we're still not up to where we were at with the Elm Road, which was closer to, was with, over two thousand trips. And the other one was fifteen hundred, so, I mean, we're catching up where we were at before. Um, switching over to the financial, because I just received, uh, the, the invoices from W R T A. So, from March through June, it's cost us fifty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars, uh, in it, for these routes. There's of course a split fifty-fifty between Trumbull County Commissioners, as well as the City of Warren, so that's a twenty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety-two split per commissioners and City of Warren.
How much is that for, right?
Um, I'd have to figure it out, but.
We got the check, they're gonna figure it out.
So you, we want to do the fifty-three thousand?
That's what we spent, yeah.
Okay.
That's a start share, we wanna see what that total cost is.
Fifty-three. So that's five thousand fifty-one cents, can't be right. Fifty-three, seven eighty-four. Either by nine, well, yeah, it would be ten thousand, nine seven five four. Five dollars and fifty-one cents.
Is that correct?
Yeah, if you take ten thousand and divide that, it comes out to five, five point three. There's almost ten thousand trips.
The trip from downtown Warren to Walmart would be five fifty.
Yeah.
Back would be five fifty, plus five fifty.
So a round should cost ten.
Yeah, you got five fifty.
Yeah, so about eleven bucks a round trip.
Right.
Then we go to Walmart backwards, or we're paying.
Yeah.
It's a town receipt, but for a bus. All right, what about Elm, or, Bonwood Avenue? Do we have any desk stats on Bonwood Avenue? I know they got two routes that service all of our people in Liberty every day.
No, I just, um, the Warren.
But those, those are funded by us.
No, I mean, either, either the Warren Express, it's just that. I, I put it here just because, does come here, and.
Well, the Warren Express.
So we're just looking at the ones that we're funding, we're not looking at the service provided to the whole county or anything with those or any.
I mean, if you'd like me to just get the numbers for that, I could, I.
It would be interesting, because I was, I was just in Liberty last week, and the buses were, I saw two of them when I was there. Those are Jimmy's and, and, uh, actually saw some next door bus stop, and just took a picture.
Well, and like I said, the interest part, where, again, like I said before, where my office is at, I'll look out. And there's three, four, or five people standing in the bus stop.
I think the Warren Express route is very well traveled, obviously. These other two routes are starting a small uptick.
Right.
But there was nowhere to go but up, I mean, when you had six minutes trips, you know?
Have they made any adjustments based on our recommendations when we rode that day, as far as?
No.
Not going to?
Because when I talked.
Jamestown Plaza, you can go through neighborhoods instead of staying on the main road, or, you know, places where people are, Jamestown Village apartments.
When I talked to, uh, Dean Harris at the time, if I would, he checked with his operating manager, uh, director, and they said that would actually add another ten to fifteen minutes on just one trip, so it, it's, for them, it's not cost-effective at this point to do it. Because it, it sounds easy to do on paper, but for the bus to actually go off, he said it's at least, uh, he's gotta go off at least fifteen minutes by the time they go over there and come back.
It just seemed that, and even now, we come this close to Jamestown Village, where there's all kinds of things to do, a B M V, a grocery store, and places to eat, and we don't do it, and then we don't turn in front of Jamestown Village Apartments, where thousands of people live. We go down the side streets, shore of that, where we're driving by residential houses, where there's zero chance of anyone jumping on a bus. So it's a big, long stretch of nothing, it just seemed like they're, if they're gonna utilize it, my recommendation at that time was utilize it where people actually are, and not just keep a bus running and get paid. Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, um, next order of business, let's see.
You got some?
Let's do the, uh, dam first.
Okay.
Debbie? When I come up to the table here, make sure everybody can hear you. We got our dam study from Kay last Wednesday, and, and I apologize with all the hospital stuff that came up Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I haven't had my chance to sink my teeth into it as much as I had hoped, but if you can give us your thoughts, it would be great.
I'm just gonna, um, Deborah, Warren Township, just wanna hit on some of the, um, key points of it. Um, so, I'm gonna run through some of the concerns that we wanted to address, um, and.
Weaving.
Residents around the dam. Um, one of the things that we had talked about was the endangered species that are in the river. That has been confirmed, we have the hellbender, um, that's there, and we also have, um, mussels. Now, um, with the mussel i- issue, um, they claim that they would have to be adequate staff available to relocate the mussels in, in the event that they get stranded there. So that is, has a dollar amount to go with it, that I'm not sure is included in the grant money that's available to them. They got eight hundred and sixteen thousand coming from Ohio EPA, and eight hundred and sixteen thousand coming from ODNR, according to the ARF's paperwork. Um, if that's just removal of the dam, there's no remediation money in, in there, um, to follow anything that's left behind, um, by what they do. There's also Indiana bats up through there, so it depends on, um, the time of the year that they can do it, that it would impact them, because if they're not there at the current time that all that stuff happens, they bat went and relocated to it, but they are there. Um, one of the other issues, um, that we're really concerned about is the, um, septic discharge into the Mahoning, um, and the impacts it will have, that has also been confirmed. As, uh, it will create a nuisance and an undesirable con- um, condition or environment, um, that's on page fifteen. Um, because as they say, um, lowering the depths of the river also is going to change the dilution process, um, because it's gonna be a difference in the amount of water it's going through, and dilution is definitely not a solution to pollution. And as we talked about earlier in the meeting, you know, we have been waiting for almost thirty years under consent agreement to get this problem adjusted. And I know you guys are working hard on it, but we do have, um, concerns, because we don't have all the funding in place and stuff for that to happen either, and they take this dam out, and that's gonna be one of the other concerns that we were issued about, um, what concern about. Also, the dam removal is gonna lead to sediment trapped above the dam, that's gonna travel downstream, because all they're gonna remove is the stuff that's right at the dam. Um, but they say even if the sediments are non-toxic, and we know that they are, because the toxins that were in the water have definitely deposited into the sediment. It just didn't have some fairy combs, they puffed all the stuffs out, and the river's actually a lot cleaner now than it's ever been. Um, so that concern of trapped, those things unraveling down the river as well, when the stuff changes. Um, also, they specifically mentioned in this document about the older dam that has to be removed. They said, according to them in the document, this is a must-do, and I'm not sure that the, um, finances are in place for it to. Um, and one of the, one of the biggest things, cause our biggest concern was the septic, but the other is the roadways and the things around it. They have confirmed that, um, with reducing the water levels, that slogging's gonna occur. When that happens, the banks of the river come dry, and then the dry soil is gonna start collapsing. Um, you wanna say that, well, is, is that really gonna happen? In Tuscarawas County several years back, the very same contractor, River Reach, that's doing this project, had the same thing happen down there. That community went five years before their roads were restored. It's crucial for Warren Township, because that's right in the via of a major intersection for North River Road, as well as West Market Street. The other issue is the fire station is literally built on the bank, so are we gonna lose our fire station, have roads closed, which will impact not only our safety forces, because that's the avenue, the quickest avenue to get to the other side of Township, but also it's gonna really impact the school, because school busing is gonna be completely, um, changed. When they have to take different routes, it's gonna increase route time. For those that you don't know, that may not know, there's a shortage in school bus issues, so a lot of schools tier start time, and that's what they've done. So we could have to create a bigger tier system, which isn't gonna work for school. That is a major issue for us, and it's a major issue for us too, that Trumbull Metro Parks didn't do a very good job in vetting the contractor that they put in there, because how did they miss that they had this exact same issue in Tuscarawas County? That both them and Ohio EPA was sued for, and shame on Ohio EPA for doing the same thing. They've approved this project and allowed a contractor with this historical problem to do the very same thing here. Not, it's not, it's not a good combination. Um, the other thing is, when those water levels do drop, and for those that, that need confirmation of that, if you go look at Summit Street, the dam isn't even all the way out yet, and the water has receded major there, you're gonna see the condition that's gonna be left alongside those riverbanks. What that means is, upstream from the dams, eleven miles, they're gonna have twenty-two miles of riverbanks that are gonna need remediation. Where does that money come from? Also, the points that they wanted to make about why they wanted to do that is for cleaner water. Eighty percent of our water issues are currently created right now for the septic discharge, so once the sanitation project is complete, that leaves twenty percent of the, the water issues of being unclean, and those are created from natural, agricultural, the animals, those kind of things that are there. That water is a gajillion times better than it has ever been, so we don't buy into the clean water thing. The other thing is, is they say they wanna restore the river to its natural state. That dam has been there since the early nineteen hundreds. So what early state do we wanna create it to, back to, the ice age? Has this community in this, this country, we have, we have evolved in all things, do we wanna take this very area we're sitting to, to its natural resources? That'd be great, it'll all go back to Warren Township, and life will be good again. This is like, that's impractical reason to do it. Then let's move to the other one. The biggest thing that we see is they're pushing the paddling and stuff, they want us to go to Lowville and look at these projects. We've already done that homework, we've already been there. We also are very astute to the things that are going on down there. They wanna make it about the paddling, yet we, we are finding people down there that their, um, kayaks and canoes are tipping over because of the shallowness of the water. And let me point out that the only people that they bought to this meeting to substantiate the paddle thing was three guys from Mahoning County. This is Trumb- this is supported by Trumbull County taxpayers. They haven't listened to those Trumbull County taxpayers for any of it. Our parks are being restored to their natural resources, because they can't even cut the grass in these things, cause they have no maintenance program and no money to do it. Yet we keep securing property that you then wanna come down the road and say it's the burden of the taxpayer to take care of this. This is gonna be the burden of the taxpayer when they go through with this dam removal, and Warren Township has already been there. We have the sleeping giant of the landfill sitting there, we've dealt with environmental issues and public health hazard and all of those things. I think it's time that the community comes first, their thing is, well, if we don't do this, we have to pay all that money back. If you didn't start it in motion, you wouldn't have to pay all the money back if you did your due diligence in what you were doing. This project is not gonna complete a better place to live in the area. They also put in this, this prod- this study, the alternatives that are there, which will have no impact to the community, and that's creating the rock, rock rappel below the dam, which will allow them to do their kayaking. You can put fish passages, passages in for the fish, or fish ladders. If they're that concerned about the fish coming upstream and not being able to do it now, that's another solution to their issue. But let me point out that we already have endangered mussels, and we have hellbenders right there. So apparently, the environment that's been created is sustaining these things, so why do we need to try to make something better and end up damaging things? And then the, the last thing that I wanna talk about is, you know, they say that these, these dams are, uh, a safety issue. When someone can tell me the last time that someone went over that dam, that hasn't happened. So maybe the people that live in Leveitsburg, at Trumbull Metro Parks, wanna think are a bunch of dumb hillbillies, have something together, cause we haven't had anybody go over our dam. We really wanna ask the commissioners to support this issue, and I know that you guys say you don't have control over them, but ultimately, you control their purse strings. And it's time that taxpayer dollars stop going to people that have no interest in the best interest of Trumbull County and its residents. Thank you.
Couple comments, um, that I'll make just right off the bat. Um, I did hear them say multiple times, that they wanna return to its natural state. Well, whether it returns to its natural state below this dam, or below Lake Milton, it's never gonna be its natural state, cause there's a dam at Lake Milton that starts this river. So unless they take out Lake Milton's dam and let Lake Milton go back to being a river again, that argument is a moot point with me. Uh, we're not affecting anybody else south of us by starting it at our dam, rather than Lake Milton Dam. And we can still retain what we have above this dam for the recreation and, and lifestyle that people in Warren Township have been experiencing for years, and have their docks, have their boats, have their own ecosystem north of the dam. One of the things I saw in the paper, which I found comical, was, one of their board members, I believe it was Mr. Brown, made a comment, and they asked him about how things are going with Summit Street Dam. And he said, oh, well, there's islands there we never knew existed, we can only, we could see the bottom of the lake shore already in areas. And that's one of the things they told us is, we're not gonna, it's not gonna decrease the depth, which we know it will. And for them to make a comment like that, after they're fighting it, it's not gonna decrease it, and say, they're already seeing islands, and they're already seeing bare patches of brown that haven't been exposed in years, just goes to show this will go down, this, this, these lake levels will go down, and with decreased rain, there could be potential of dry spells enough that it will wipe out the ecosystem as far as mussels, the fish, uh, that are in there, that need so much water for so much oxygen to survive, gonna negatively affect it, they can't have an argument otherwise. I did read all the Tuscarawas County things, yeah, that was a, that was a huge, huge catastrophe, and if that company ever wanted to work in my county again, those Tuscaraws, there's no way in hell, after the amount of money across the, the Tuscarawas County Commissioners, and the state, and their engineer, repair the road that was destroyed directly one hundred percent by this company, removing the dam that they had in Tuscaraws. And it was oversight on their part, and the risk is not worth the reward, as far as the, the main road that we have that parallels where this dam is. Um, I think we need to review it as commissioners again, the three of us, we need to call our next meeting, we said we weren't gonna do anything until we got the study back. We'll make sure the parks, um, board has their copies of the study. Let's give it a couple of weeks, and then, I'd say tomorrow, Commissioner, if we can, we got a couple of dates to send to them to have the wrap-up meeting, and make our official recommendations from us, uh, at that time, and be able to discuss it one more time, to give them a chance to justify things that they may disagree with in this study, compare both studies they have. Um, I know they're chomping at the bit to get moving on it, and get forward on it, and they're appropriating funds, and, and just because we're financially vested in this already somewhat, um, we can pull the plug at any time. It's gonna be money lost either way, either lost for a community, or lost, um, from saving the dam either way. Um, so I think we're at that point now where we're gonna have enough information, that we can sit down again and figure out what we're gonna do with this.
I, I agree, without, without the, the Parks Board here, you know, we can, we can spin this around till we're blue in the face, but, um, we recognize even from the last meeting, all those different possibilities that would happen when the dam is removed. And none of them directly affect other communities, but they directly affect this community. And that's something that we have to take a long, hard look at. At our last meeting, we had hundreds of people, um, come to us and say, uh, you know, what are, what are we gonna do about this? It, it's hard to, and just glancing over the, the study, and I'm glad we did it, all those things that you mentioned, and all those things that people said in that room, were true. Um, and all the things that the park board had been telling us, uh, but maybe not all of them, but some of them seem to be not true, or disputed in this actual study. So I think we need to, uh, a come-to-Jesus meeting with that Parks Board, that they have to really look over this study, that we have invested in, and, um, come up with a solution that is beneficial to everybody. I mean, this, this community, as, as Debbie said, has gone through a lot, uh, with the landfill, and the jail, and everything, the prison, everything that's over there, and we don't wanna add anything that's, uh, negative, a- and, and the lasting impacts of this could be, could be damning. From a public health pers- perspective, and from an economic perspective.
One thing we're overlooking in this whole big thing is common sense, and when we're at the top of the river, they're at the bottom of the river in Lowville. Lowville's gonna get all the water above them, all of it. If it rains in the middle, and we've all been there before, where you drove through rain, you talked to someone in the, in the next city over, and they're like, it didn't rain a drop here. Warren got pounded with rain, Portland didn't get anything. All the rain that happens from here to here is gonna end up in Lowville. The Lowville's gonna have a flow that's always gonna be the end result of anything that happened north of that chain. Where we are, with our dam, we're only gonna get from here to Lake Milton, if Lake Milton Dam is closed, if they've got the gate valves shut down to retain water in Lake Milton, and they're not putting any flow in the river, all we have to rely on is rainwater that's gonna be from Leveitsburg to Lake Milton, to replenish that river, to keep the river flowing where we are. So we're gonna dry up a lot quicker, and it makes sense too, that just pour water anywhere downhill, the water here is gonna dry up before it gets to the bottom. The water at the bottom's gonna collect in the low spot, which, in our situation, is Lowville. So for Lowville to have kayaking and do their thing, that's where it should be, if it was reversed, and we had it all there, that wouldn't make any sense, because there'll be times when we're a lot lower than the Lowville's gonna be, based on the rain and just natural, um, gravity.
Right.
Per se, so that's something that's never been brought up, in the meetings that I've been at either, is, we're dependent on water source coming in to keep what we have here. They're dependent on us giving them water for them to get what they get, and then they get everything in between also. So they, you can't compare the two, when they say, look in Lowville, they're never dry, they got plenty of water, they're kayaking, which, you know, all the time. They're at the very, there's the, yeah, there's the, the low point where all the water ends up.
And Leveitsburg isn't Lowville, they're comparing apples to oranges.
Correct, correct. Let's, uh, look at my calendar, look at your calendar today, and hopefully tomorrow, let's be prepared to throw a few dates out there, we can call in our next meeting. Try to work with the park board to see, maybe do it on day of their meeting, and we ask them to have their meeting here, and then we combine it somehow again, but let's, we, we need to address this, we need to address it soon. Before they start, before they dump any more money into it, and there are options, like Deb said. If they got the grant money, they can do what they want with, but we got their overhead money, their salary money, their partner operations money, and unless they have another bag of money somewhere that we don't know about, it will directly affect them, if we go that route. Okay, thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
John, do you have anything? Julie?
Um, yeah, I did wanna bring up a couple things, um, well, I can wait to talk about the ARF stuff, I did wanna, uh, bring up the subject again of our building. We brought it before the commissioners.
Little blowtorch just right here, I'm sorry, Julie Green?
I'm sorry. Uh, Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning. Um, in, I think it was the end of May, beginning of June, we discussed with the commissioners, the rest of the building repairs to be done at east, at our building. And we had, you know, offered our assistance with the RFP process, I know, it was inundated with a lot of projects. I just wanted to follow up with that, with the commissioners, to see what your thoughts were. We had a list of things that were identified during the replacement of the roof. And I can go over those again if you'd like, just wanted to bring it up again.
That's fine, go ahead.
Um, so we had talked about the, uh, masonry issues, uh, when they did the inspection on the roof, they discussed the, um, water penetrating, the masonry joints that were failing, that would potentially lead to failure. So that was one thing that we were, um, looking at, moving forward with, getting out.
The elevator as well.
We need a new elevator, um, it is very, very old. Um, it, it, they do come and service it, however, I don't believe it's subject to any sort of ADA. I, I'm, I'm not, it's, it's compliant.
It's compliant.
It is compliant, uh, but it is old. Um, and then we also talked about the ceiling tiles, some of which are covered by the, um, insurance that you had claim that you had placed when we had the major flood, but there are a number of other areas that still need to be replaced, and. But there are a number of other areas that still need to be replaced, including on the first floor. And, um, I know that Lynn Wallace Smith can speak to that. And then the carpet on the second floor was completely saturated with, I, I think at least six inches of water, and that was never replaced. It was cleaned, um, the water was suctioned out, but anybody that comes in, I think, can smell the, the residual after whatever effects of that. So we would like to do an RFP for carpet as well. There were two items on that original list that were taken care of. Bill, I believe, took care of the push bar or the.
Crash bar, yeah.
The crash bar, that was taken care of. And then, uh, we just recently requested transfer of funds to purchase a new refrigerator. Our refrigerator on the second floor, I think, is probably older than me and Gary have been around. So just in terms of cost efficiency for electrical usage, I'm sure it'll pay for itself. I mean, it was a limited amount of money.
So that's still all the way back from the lean building, that same fridge?
Yeah, and really can't even keep, you, you know how you can't really, um, regulate the, the cold, the temperature? And so if you put a salad in there, it just freezes. So in, in any case, that's taken care of. But, um, and the only other, I think the other thing that we had asked in that initial email from May 30 was adding a sink in the break room. Currently, the employees are required to wash their lunch. A lot of them eat lunch in, in the office. They wash their dishes in the bathroom.
That's something we could do, Bill.
Yeah, we could look at it.
Well, we're willing to put together the, you know, the documents to do the RFPs and all of that. We just wanted to know if it was okay with maintenance and the commissioners for us to start that project.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, some of the stuff like buying a refrigerator.
We already did that.
Putting, putting the sink in, you know, those people can do that, you don't need an RFP for that.
Carpet.
Carpet, we can do the bit on the carpet, absolutely. We did it for all the other buildings. And it does, when you walk in there, you know, that's something that gives people a headache. That's not a good working environment when you have mold and mildew that's in there. And it definitely smells like I'm going into a 90-year-old lady's living room. When, uh, you go into the planning commission, that shouldn't be our showcase when you're meeting with potential people.
That's descriptive.
We've all been there. We've all had that great ant or something. You remember that smell for the rest of your life. Minus the urine.
Oh, boy.
So, yeah, those things I, I would say you're working on as soon as you can.
Yeah, so it, it's okay for the planning commission, me and, and Nick, to get started on that. And then we'll update Bill as we get to a point where he's ready.
And you are way more patient than 90% of department heads should be because we've got some department heads and there's some people in the private sector that any of those issues, they would be here pounding their fists and screaming.
Wow.
You're, you're a little more tolerant than, than most.
He's got a lot going on in this county.
I mean, Nick basically had to wear flippers or a.
Flip-flop.
Flip-flop fins and goggles, diving goggles, just to go to work every day and snuggle.
He did.
And he, he championed through it and didn't complain at all, so.
He never does. He's great. Thank you.
Um, Alex Stephen Jonesy-Bush, Human Resources Department. Commissioners, I would like to take this time to talk about an article that's in the contract, specifically 2493 pertaining to this. Uh, so there, we do get pushbacks. I just want to be very clear that, be aware that this is going to be probably forthcoming because I deal with it every single day when it comes to projects in our county. So if you do want to contract out business, um, you have to, obviously, 2493 has a specific clause about contracting out right now in their current contract that dictates that our employees can do it within a reasonable amount of time. And I have to stress, reasonable amount of time. Uh, it is to go first within our maintenance, building and maintenance department. If it can't, and they do grieve this, so just be aware that those are things that I deal with on the backend. So just please make sure that you cross all your Ts and dial all your Is. If it can't be done within a reasonable amount of time, then we absolutely should contract it out because safety, all those things come first when it comes to employees and, and their workspace. But please just keep HR on the loose because I do deal with it on the backend and I don't necessarily appreciate it dealing with it on the backend if I can get a front of it. So let us sit down if there's any need and we'll talk with the union, whatever it may be. But, yeah, let's try to get ahead of it, but get the work done. That's the priority.
Julie Green, Trumbull County Planning. Thank you for bringing up.
You're welcome.
My attention. I'm very much supportive of our union for sure.
Agreed.
Um, but I would ask, if we could, remember what is reasonable amount of time?
I completely agree. And that's why I wanted to bring it up.
It's been several years.
Yeah. So, um, again.
I know there's a lot going on.
Yeah, do not hold me to this, and this is just my human resources perspective, but whenever I hear something that says, you know, there's a safety thing in there, whether it's mold or mildew or asbestos or whatever the case may be. That should be something of precedent, specifically because we have employees working in that type of environment. Um, you know, ceiling tiles, again, ceiling tiles, right? We can live with some brown on ceiling tiles.
Oh, no, we have no ceiling tiles.
Okay, that would be something that needs.
That's where the water came.
That would be something that needs to be addressed. Okay, gotcha. So maybe we can talk offline.
Bill Hertz, Trumbull County Maintenance, that's where the water came to the ceiling.
Sure, yeah, I know.
So we weren't doing any of that until the roof was done.
Yeah.
So now that the roof is done.
Now that the roof is done, okay. Um, and again, elevators, as long as they are ADA compliant and we do have ADA, and all of our buildings should be ADA compliant, and we've done a study on that, um, including our sinks, including, okay. So things that we will need to look into, Julie.
Yeah, we did an architectural barrier study in 20.
And there was no updates made to make.
I'm sure there have been. Again, there's, you know, there's a lot going on. So we can discuss it.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not, I'm just willing to be part of the larger team that solves the issues, not necessarily say you didn't do your job.
Absolutely. That's not what this is about.
Right.
We just need to move forward and get things done in whatever fashion that takes. But I just want to make sure that I give you.
Yeah.
The facts along the way too of what I, what we have to deal with on the backend.
And I appreciate it. Thank you very much. I think that's it.
Cool. Bill Hertz, Trumbull County Maintenance. I have four things actually on my little short list. One is, actually, three at the fairgrounds. Um, we did, I did get word that the Fair Board was gonna pick up the remaining cost of the poles, the commercial burn, the building to be replaced. Whether or not the commissioners want to contribute anything to that number, which was $27,000, that's up to the board, um, but they are willing to pay that right now. Two, I'd like to donate some of the vehicles that we had on our lot that aren't roadworthy, but yet they're fairworthy. They don't go on the road, they're not gonna be insured to be on the road, they're not gonna have a plate on it, but they could use them within the fairgrounds to transport items, flower pots, pots, dirt, you know, some sort of things of that nature. One would be a van and one would be a, a mini truck, a car van. But again, just within the fairgrounds. They have one now that's just on the fairgrounds, the old beat-up white Ford, I think it is, or Chevy. But they needed some help, so we have them on the lot and that's all they would be used for. They would insure them, they're not on the road. So permission to go forward with that.
Yes.
Just to give them. The third is for the fairgrounds is.
But you just, Bill, just make sure our guys do whatever they can.
Oh, yeah.
Don't give them a piece of crap.
No, 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 they're not. I've already had it gone through. I've had it gone through. The third is that, uh, we have a meeting, myself and Mr. Tim Hanaford, at the fairgrounds. I relayed a message to Barry who was on the Lake Fish Inn. He told me, called me later, gave him a heads up where we may want to try to put a tower out on the fairgrounds property, which is the county's property as well, um, to try to get some service of cell phone, broadband of sorts there. So we have a meeting on Wednesday the 4th or Tuesday the 4th at 12 o'clock out there. So, um, uh, I talked to a gentleman yesterday, I was out there looking because I'm setting the new poles for the power for that little station we have out there. And, uh, gentleman flying his airplane come over and goes, "You know what? We had fair, I have 5Gs. Never had 5G since I've been here on a cell phone." So hopefully we could provide cell phone service out there with this type of work. Last one is, since you brought up carpet. Commissioner Federico wanted a meeting today with me.
Judge Federico, yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, Judge Federico. Uh, he, he canceled today, this morning. Uh, he wants to go forward with putting carpet on the third floor of the stone building, which is gonna be renovated shortly. I tried to express to Joe Savo that it's gonna get trashed. They're gonna be removing ceiling tiles, ductwork, but he wants to move forward. I don't know, but, um, I'm just letting the commissioners know, you know, we spend this money for the third floor and he also wants to put a courtroom up there that he's paying for. Um, just keep that in your, if, you know, he wants to go forward with this in our building, that's, uh, the commissioners to decide. And the last thing, no, I'm done.
That's four.
That's four.
That one, four.
Then I'm done.
That's four, you're done. I had also asked the commissioner earlier, um, Bill's gonna look at the courthouse across the street, stripping and waxing the floors and then cleaning some of the other, the deep cleaning areas that have been overlooked. And he's gonna get his people on that.
On, on the courtroom, it would seem to be, I know we want to get that ready for the courtroom, but we're putting the carpet in before the roof and the renovation? He wants it done. I, I expressed to Joe Savo when I was on vacation, I talked to him and says, you know, "Joe, we're gonna be renovating." That says he wants it done, he don't care. This is the, the consensus of the board. It's our building, but again, he's in our space. We wait till after renovation, you know, so this is gonna come up here.
I'd like to speak to him before.
In that line, I, again.
On that issue, if you don't mind, let me.
I have my quotes, so.
Okay. One other thing too, Bill, across the street is also brought to my attention, they have some new trees and some new plants and they said they're not, they haven't been watered.
Oh, they water them every, every, they're out there this morning.
Okay.
No, it's being tanned here.
Okay.
Myself and Jody upstairs in Judge Logan's office, we're on top of her flowers.
Gotcha. Hey, Dominic, see you're here. You wanna take the floor and use the microphone and announce who you are?
Hello, Dominic Marari, Director of Public Relations at the Warren Family Mission, lifelong resident of Trumbull County. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank every person here for your commitment to serve Trumbull County and make it a better place for us all to work and live. And, uh, just to share just a brief snippet of who I am and why I do what I do today. I wanna share about my personal life story for a split second and then what we're doing at the mission and update, um, of some needs that we have at the mission. But this picture right here was taken at the hotel down the road. Uh, behind the Trumbull County Jail, uh, when I found myself in that facility on October 12th of 2012, charged with a second-degree felony and also multiple misdemeanor accounts. During that time of my life, I was actually homeless, hopeless and addicted to heroin and crack. I had a come-to-Jesus moment right there on the bed, uh, well, it wasn't a bed, it was a boat, because that's what they had in the Trumbull County Jail because it was overpopulated at the time. But I had a come-to-Jesus moment right on the floor and I said, "God, if you're real, can you show up and get me out of this mess?" And so I went through a program in Michigan called Mid-Michigan Teen Challenge. I spent three years of my life there. And through that time in Michigan, I met a man by the name of Pastor Chris Gilger. And Pastor Chris Gilger believed in me when I couldn't believe in myself. Uh, the mission got behind me, supported me through the rides and recovery program. And, uh, also upon graduation of that program, I came back home to serve at the mission because I believed in what they did for me. They gave me a vehicle that came in on donation. They gave me a job. And from that now, um, this October 12th, I'll celebrate 12 years of sobriety. And I chose not to be so anonymous with my story and share it to people so that they can find hope and that they can also to recover. Today, I'm a father of two beautiful children. I've been married for five years. I live and work in Trumbull County and I am a Realtor with Howard Hannah. I am also the owner, the operator and the president of Senior Care Insurance. So I operate two businesses in this, uh, in this county. I work at the mission, uh, past president of the Warren Rotary Club, uh, president-elect of the Board of Directors for Second Harvest Food Bank. Um, so, you know, it's been my life's passion. William Shaker says, "The whole purpose of life is to find your gifting and the meaning of life is to give it away." And I've truly found meaning and purpose in giving back to the community and helping those that are struggling. Uh, when we think about the Warren Family Mission and the work that we're doing, uh, we recently celebrated 25 years as an organization. And we're seeing a lot of people in need. If you think about the number of meals that we served last year, in 2023, we served 121,775 meals, uh, through our daily feeding program. And we also gave away 21,839 bags of groceries through our pantry program. So not only are we feeding and giving away groceries, but we also have a clothing room. And last year, we had over 6,000, uh, people utilize our clothing room. So 6315, uh, have came through our clothing room. And that was 105% increase from the previous year. People are struggling. They're looking for ways to stretch the dollar into our clothing room. That's one way that they're able to get clothing. When we think about some of the staffing that we have at the Warren Family Mission, so we don't have a lot of staff, uh, most of our volunteers that do help us operate these programs do come from Trumbull County. So we have volunteers from Trumbull County, Johnson Family Services. We also have, uh, volunteers from the Trumbull County Court System. So if we think about the amount of hours last year combined for just those two, uh, that's roughly over 3,300 hours, um, that we were able to get help from the Trumbull County, um, volunteers through the Johnson Family Services and also through the court system. We also are doing a lot of community outreach, um, whether it's our community engagement room that we're trying to launch and also, uh, we're trying to catch the kids at a young age before they're homeless, before they're in the food lines, before they're utilizing our services, giving them information for transformation, teaching them life skills they might not be getting modeled at home. So that's one of the new things that we're in the process of trying to launch, um, through our outreach building located at 155 Todd. We also have our community events, like we just did a backpack giveaway, uh, you know, 500 book bags are given away, uh, to children in need. And as we get into the holidays, we'll begin doing our Thanksgiving, um, and then our Christmas dinner, which at both of those dinners, we'll, we'll serve roughly over 2,000 meals. And then also our toy giveaway, which will, 1,000 children will receive, uh, brand-new toys. So we're doing a lot with a little. And also, uh, we have residential facilities. So we have a men's program, we have a women's program. And so that's kind of what we're doing. And it's been a big need of us, and I'm just asking for consideration, um, to accept a, um, application for the American Rescue Plan. We have a need of air conditioners at the mission. If you ever want to, you know, free membership to the sauna, come visit us over at 155 Todd because it gets pretty hot in there. And especially this week with the temperatures in the 90s, um, it's, it's extremely hot. And we're just asking and looking for help from the Trumbull County Commissioners to not overlook our needy and vulnerable population. Um, you know, we have to serve our daily meals outside because the cafeteria is not cooled. Uh, we have volunteers that work in the clothing room from Trumbull County, Johnson Family Services and the, uh, court order volunteers. And so I'm calling this Operation Cool Down and I've got a couple quotes and it's gonna cost roughly $166,412 to provide air conditioning to the Warren Family Mission. Now, when we look at the fact that we are an organization that makes a difference one life at a time, all our services are free, the majority of our funding comes from donations. If I scroll back and I look through the amount of money that, whether it was the city or the county donates, it's very, very minimal. So it's because people who believe in us and see what we're doing, support us and enable us to continue to make a difference one life at a time. And I just wanted to start, start the conversation, um, and make sure that we don't get overlooked. I mean, I've heard the conversation say, "The squeaky wheel gets greased." Well, it has been squeaking and it hasn't been greased yet, but I just wanted to bring up the point. Like, please don't overlook the mission with the American Rescue Plan funds. Um, this is something that, you know, Trumbull County, um, citizens utilize and we're doing a lot with a little bit and we just don't have it in our budget. So with that being said, I thank everybody, um, you know, for their support and I thank everybody for their commitment to Trumbull County, uh, to make this place better for all of us. all of us. With that.
Tom, uh, I just gotta say, um, no matter how many times I hear that story, it always gets me, first of all, and, uh, it, it's, it's an amazing, incredible story where you came from to where you are today, and we've known each other on, on personal level for a while, but, um, the family mission, we helped with, with, with the CARES Act, the first round of CARES Act dollars, I know we, we helped to a certain degree, and we helped Second Harvest Food Bank. It's not the flashy thing to do, it's not the political thing to do, it's the right thing to do in this situation with people that are, um, at their, at their lowest, really, and, and if we can, if we can help in some way, whether it be through ARPA or another way, uh, I think the board needs to look at that, because, uh, you're investing in our most vulnerable population, and, um, people that need it most, and if, God forbid, one of us was in that situation, we would want that too, so, um, I, I just think it's a wonderful, Pastor Chris was a, was a phenomenal man, and I know you looked up to him like a father as well, uh, his untimely passing has been tragic for this area, because he did so much, but you're taking the reins and, and taking on that same commitment, and uh, I applaud you for that, my friend, I do.
It, it is something, it's real easy when people come to us and they're in that point, first thing we think of is, send them to the mission, go to the mission, and the mission is actually faces and volunteers and needs money.
That's right.
Just like anything else, and that's kind of, there's a lot of programs out there, but the, the easiest A to B is Mission, uh, Warren Family Mission, I mean, everybody knows that, but we don't all, I guess, take advantage to fund it, and that is something that we need to look at as a board going in the future of how we can help. I don't know, of course, ERP, that's a whole nother story.
Sure.
That we're dealing with right now.
I know City of Warren, you've asked City of Warren the same sort of assistance as well, have you not?
I have, I put it out to the mayor about helping out with some of the cooling. Um, the Warren City Council members, uh, did donate seventy thousand dollars towards the renovation of our community engagement room, which was the old Todd United Methodist Church. Uh, through our purchase contract with the church, it was, uh, in the contract where they could obtain that space as long as they had a certain member of, membership on a weekly basis. And this past January, um, we were able to acquire that space back. Uh, now, we had the church that was upset about losing the space, but we were able to provide them with another portion of our building and take back our sanctuary, and that space is going under, um, renovations now as we speak, uh, we did receive the seventy thousand dollars from council, and a portion of this money would be able to provide air conditioning, uh, for this space, for our cafeteria and our second floors. Um, I do have it broken up into sections, um, and there's a easy, or a cheaper way and the right way, which, um, that cost could be lowered by exposing the wires and putting them in conduit versus putting them in the wall. So I began this process and just wanted to formally, um, make a request to, um, seek support for this.
So, so we are in a state of flux right now with the, with the hospital, as you know, and looking at different revenue sources to, to potentially, uh, assist in that matter, so, but things are sort of fluid right now and they're up in the air, but if there is a way that we can help, I know that, um, commissioners feel strongly about this, um, but you just gotta hold tight for a little bit, because we're, we're in a, we're in a holding pattern ourselves here for, for, uh, funding and, and, and different things that we're looking at in the future that also impact this valley, but probably, maybe larger than anything, uh, in, in that hospital, so, um, I just ask that you be patient, um, and, and wait for us to sort of work through some of these details, these financial details. Yes, sir.
Martha Yoda, Trumbull County Auditor. I think, though, if it's all right with the commissioners, I can take their request and put it on the maybe list, and I can at least put it filed, so if you give it to me, I will scan it in and, and, uh, we'll have it for when we can deal with it, so, all right.
Alex, you and Johnson Bush are in sources. A lot of times, um, I'm really thankful that you came so today, specifically because, not because you recognize our departments, but I think it's a really important thing to, a lot of times in the county, we kind of get stuck in the weeds and we don't talk about the good that our departments are also doing, and I can attest, coming from Johnson Family Services, um, and I would implore other departments in this, in this county as well. So coming from Johnson Family Services, I do know very well how much, you know, our WEP workers are there, how much we donated, every, as when I was administrative assistant for Director Argano, we always, uh, did a coat drive, uh, for you guys, drop them off, I would personally come drop the stuff off, uh, the food during Thanksgiving, all of that stuff, and I think it's a great way for departments to do that as well. So if you don't already do that, they do a coat drive, we would put a box in front of our offices and say, anybody who coats for little children, big children, anything, and drop it off, uh, we would do canned food drives around Christmas time, uh, drop it off, so all of those things are things that we can do to give back as department heads and as directors and as county employees as well. So please don't forget that, it, I know it's not your air conditioning, but it's just something that we can do.
Do we, have we, or do we, or have we ever had any type of charitable thing we could do through our pay? Like where we could divert maybe one percent of our pay?
That's through United Way.
Goes into a charitable fund?
Um.
No, I'm, I'm talking where?
Yeah.
In the county, they take it out.
That we started something like that, no, that's never happened.
No.
And then we'd have a fund or whatever that's set up just with charitable, I mean, I know General Motors workers have done that, and there's many other private sector businesses where you can divert money out of your pay.
If you choose, yeah.
As you see, and they, they could do something as small as one percent, but at the end of the year, if you got fourteen hundred employees or whatever, could add up enough money to give back to the community, and then we can look at that dress that every year where we're gonna spend the charitable money within the community.
So we do have that option through United Way, that's what I was just gonna say, so United Way drives our two-one-one process too, which then ties back to Warren Family Mission, so it is all intertwined in, in a, in a way. Um, so there is the option for employees to, you know, take back or keep back a certain percentage and donate to United Way, not necessarily to Warren Family Mission per se, but remember, United Way does collectively, um, handle our two-one-one, which is a huge, huge feat alone, in two-one-one when clients of Trumbull County or anywhere, customers, clients, citizens, whatever the case may be, or even speaking of Mahoney County, they do multiple counties. But either way, what two-one-one does is it gives you a good collective list, or you can go online and access it, of where you can go for the Christie House, the Warren Family Mission for meals, for churches that are doing meals. Um, it is a one-stop shop, teacup for heaps and for, you know, winter and summer months. It is a one-stop shop, and, you know, employees do have that option to donate to United Way through their check right now, but there's no, uh, there's nothing outside of that per se.
Commissioner Stillheart, Trumbull County Maintenance, is your facility already ducted? Does it already have duck work in it, or it's not ducted?
So we have a boiler system at the one five five Todd Avenue, so the quote that we received was from Mini Splits.
Okay.
Um, when they look at most cost-effective approach, uh, Mini Splits was that way to be able to minimize the cost, both elec, on the electrical bill, um, maybe not utilizing that room, don't turn the mini split on, um, so, you know, we did get the quote to run duck work, but it was just.
And I say this because commissioners, in the renovation of the Health Department, and I'm reaching out to the engineered architect now, and I'm waiting to answer you, but I do believe that we have two furnace AC units supplying basement first floor in the basement of the old Health Department that is getting renovated to one large one. So those two in the basement would be basically, you know, but if that were.
Available.
And, and that may not.
Potentially.
That may not happen this spring, fall, but by next year, they'll be readily available if that be the case.
Well, I think that if, if they're in good working order.
They're in good working order.
And it, I, I would be in favor of something like that, obviously.
I mean, and they're just gonna go somewhere else.
Right.
And if that's feasible as part of the.
That's an option, just putting it out there.
Yeah, as part of another plan to help assist.
Yes, thanks for bringing that up.
Whether it be directed right into the room with one large, you know, supply air and at least you have cool and heat.
That'd be a great option, I mean, we could look at getting the piping, you know, to maybe the cafeteria space or the clothing room space, and then utilizing those units, that would, that would be great.
So if, if, when that time comes, commissioners?
Yeah, I definitely think we need to look into that.
Okay.
Um, all right.
In the meantime, you can submit and we'll put it on the maybe list, uh, unfortunately, everything's so in flux, like I said, that it'll be on the maybe list, but, but we recognize the priority of it as well, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thanks, Marta, Marta, I'll get that over to you, and, uh, I just have to, you know, um, you know, thank everybody I've seen on Facebook, especially with, you know, the situation hospitals in, it's encouraging to see everybody coming together to try to save our hospitals, so I just wanted to thank everybody on that, um, you know, Facebook, you see a lot of scrolling and you see a lot of good stuff in the background, so keep up the hard work and praying for Trumbull County, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can anyone else have anything before we get into the big topic?
Commissioner, we have commissioners, another commissioner texting our work phone that she would like to be unmuted.
She can be at the discussion section when we get to the end.
I just don't want it to be on mute.
Nope, that's fine.
So, I told you.
She's more than willing to join the meeting, come to the meeting.
I, yeah, I don't care.
We've got the phone thing in the middle, we're not gonna do it anymore. Um, okay. All right, with the, with the hospitals, a brief update of where we are with stuff that we may or may not know, um, we had the press conference last Thursday, uh, between this mayor, myself, and the hospital workers. We, uh, had our meeting, special meeting Friday, where we approved up to three million dollars. Warren City did the same thing that we did, and it was, it was a nice joint effort, and their, their sentiments, I was there, you were there, Commissioner Franchka was there, um, were very similar to what we had talked about. Um, then, that's, that's the wheels in motion for a lot of different things, to stop the bleeding a little bit as far as employee morale, it gave hope in a sense that, yeah, we are on the same page, it flushed out the serious people versus proposers or people that were talking and didn't have substance. And then Sunday, the, the big group of everybody, and when I say big group, I mean the group that wants to purchase the hospital, the, all the entities, advisors, all the entities, consultants, we got together live and in person, some of us, the rest on a Zoom call, just to update kind of where we are. We had a local financial institution that offered, um, possibility of loaning up to thirty million dollars.
CBA, credit line.
Credit line, that's, yeah, line of credit.
Line of credit.
Of the thirty million dollars, but of course, it needs to be secured somehow, you know, which we brought up to the county and the city, we don't have that type of money, we're not gonna, we can't back that up without essentially hurting our line of credit or our buying power. And then, I know Bill has done some, some research, we'll get that out in the middle as far as funding ideas with what's legal, what's not legal, but the bottom line is, the date was moved also, they wanted to file everything on Monday, uh, as far as the objection of the bankruptcy proceeding, and, uh, a plan for this group to purchase the rights of the hospital. Um, we realized also over the weekend, Mahoney County's never been engaged, and two of the five facilities are in Austintown. So I talked to, uh, Commissioner Rigetti, and I talked to Commissioner Ditzler, um, they are addressing it now, the hospital, uh, group sent over a packet to them to review, they're gonna be reviewing it over the next couple of days to see if they will or should have any involvement in our Austintown facilities, either financially or through support. Uh, also, I was an Austintown Township trustee yesterday, and talked to them on the phone before that, he's seen what Austintown can do to get involved in the process. I talked to Holland Administrator on what they can do and where, where they are with the process, and it was brought up by, uh, Councilman Michael Bryan, that hey, this isn't just a Warren County problem, it's a whole, whole county problem, and when we looked at the statistics of the users of the hospital, Warren City residents are number one, Niles is number two, so I think Niles needs to be engaged in some way, shape, or form, it's twenty-seven percent of people that go to Trumbull Hospital, Trumbull Regional Hospital are from Niles. Um, there's also Cortland, there's everywhere through the county, so this isn't just us carrying, doing the heavy lifting of burden, we need to engage the whole community, trustees, cities, uh, and townships. Uh, I also had about an hour-long conversation with Lieutenant Governor Houston on Saturday, or on Sunday, and he brought me up to speed on where the state is and stuff, and the big consensus of everything is, would, nobody is gonna give a penny, including us, until we see a plan. Um, the group Delta Healthcare that's putting the plan together, that's acting as the broker between the bankruptcy court, this group, Stewart Health, the landlord, and all the entities that are brokering the deal together, they had a funeral with their main guy that we're dealing with, uh, in Atlanta, he was, uh, unavailable to get the plan complete, um, for today, so they're looking at a Wednesday deadline of filing it in court. Uh, they did file a motion on behalf of us and Warren City and, uh, the group yesterday and bankruptcy court, basically the objection, and, um, the law firm that we're dealing with there, uh, reached out to me and they, they sent an email yesterday, they are representing the group, they did the letter for us, um, which, uh, we have yet to sign, um, but they sent an email, um, it's Brennan Mana Diamond is the name of the law firm that is in, uh, Columbus and Akron, but they want us, uh, we have to sign an engagement letter for them to represent us in that, and it says on here, it, it's pro bono, it'll be free of charge to do the letter to represent the, all the entities that want to do a, a objection letter, but for them to officially do it, submit it the way that it needs done, they want us to retain them, and like I said, no costs at all, and it's, I have a, a contract here from them that says specifically through it, there will be no charge at all to the county for the service, that it's four hundred and fifty dollar an hour value that they are donating is pro bono for us to, to submit the letter and officially back it up and, and submit it in Texas. So I asked your permission for me to be able to sign the letter, um, so that it's official with them, and then in just this filing the motion, um, of objection that we agreed upon it the other day, and this is just to file the objection for the, uh, bankruptcy closure notice, not, uh, not the plan, not any type of financial obligation to us, it's just that, um, but if I get your permission, I'd like to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, then, the next step of it is, there are a lot of groups that have been engaged, there are commitments of about ten million dollars already of the funds outside of a loan structure, and that, that means us, the city, and, and some of the private entities. Since then, I heard there's another three million pledged, and then there are a lot waiting on the plan. And before they get a check, before they bring it to their board, they want to see who's gonna run the hospital, what the terms are, what the duration is, to make sure we're not coming back in six months or a year, and then we, we took it off Stewart's hands and now it's a mess for us. Um, the hospital is losing people as we speak, they lost four emergency room nurses yesterday, and unfortunately, but I guess it's business and it's life, they went over to Mercy and Mercy was offering a sign-on bonus with higher pay to, to attract the best out of the hospital and kind of pillaging, you know, they're getting in, they got in the garage sale before anyone else did, and I don't blame the employees for that, um, but it is a concern, and that's why they need to act quick on this, because our strongest asset is the staff and the employees intact, and, you know, we're gonna reboot a car, we get out the engine, we can't buy a car without an engine, and that's, those people are the engine. Um, there'll be a lot of progress today, another group I was contacted by this morning is a private ambulance company that's nationwide, they called and they have an interest in supporting and getting, being, jumping on part of the team, so I referred them over, um, and like I said the other day, we gotta turn over every rock and shake every tree, find the money to make this happen, there is a candlelight vigil on Thursday, the hospital's putting together, that's great for the community to come together that way, but right now, it's, we need the money and we need a plan, and I hope that we have the plan today, as they said, it should be any moment today, that Delta will provide everybody with the plan, and then hopefully the plan has enough substance that it will pass for us, the investors, and the bankruptcy court is gonna have to approve it also, so, um, I'm sure they're working diligently. Part of the problem too that was discovered over the weekend was, everything we have in a plan was Stewart's numbers in the last four years, and nobody trusts Stewart's numbers, they know they're siphoning money off the top, they know there are a lot of administrative fees put in there that were being funneled off to their administration and their, their investors, and it's already been proven, you know, two hundred and fifty million dollar yachts and, um, fifty million dollar fishing boats and, you know, one of the CEOs on the lam right now, international fugitive, it, it wasn't the fault of the employees there, it was the fault of bad healthcare, uh, admin, admin, that bad ownership. So it's, it's hard to look at their numbers and trust them, they've gone back to pre-COVID when healthcare systems weren't propped up in America, they're looking at twenty nineteen, they've also been asked to go through the meeting we had this week, and to go a little further back, and we even had the former CEO of Forum Health step forward, um, and offer his assistance, and we can look at potentially the books of what it was when Forum ran it, try to get a more accurate number of, with this new plan, with this new ownership group, what are the chances of suc- try to get a more accurate number of, with this new plan, with this new ownership group, what are the chances of suc- for it to succeed? Without everybody having a whole bunch of hope, and throwing their money into a sinking ship that we can't do anything about anyway. So, once that plan is clear, and they look at those numbers, bottom line is, this hospital has to be profitable for any of us to get engaged in it. We don't wanna just keep a nurse's or a doctor's job for six months or a year. We wanna make sure it's something that's gonna be viable into the future, and I think everyone's got their eyes open for that. And, and we are working with, um, I think there's eleven different unions that are part of this. They've all come forward and said, we'll help, we'll assist, we'll relook at the contracts, we'll do what we gotta do to make this happen. So it is a true community effort, um, and all we can say now is everyone is doing their best, can't make any promises at this point. And, uh, hopefully, everybody does their part. I feel we've done our part as commissioners so far, and we continue to do our part. I'm gonna thank Martha, uh, and, and our prosecutor, and everyone involved on our team for getting the information that we need, getting this stuff, so that we can dot our i's and cross our t's. Um, City of Warren seems like they're doing an excellent job with it also. There are a lot of others in the community that really need to step up and make this possible if they want it to happen, because it can't be on our backs. It, the lifting is too heavy for the county and the city right now. Um, but with the strength of the workers there, with the strength of some other communities, with the strength of private investors, with the strength of Mr. Pablos and his team, with the strength of the Warren Hospital, Inc., um, and the residency program there, and seven seventeen, and Huntington Bank, you know, this is a very possible thing. You know, the ingredients are there, and there needs to be a chef that knows how to make a masterpiece to make this thing happen.
So, first of all, um, I'd like to say that, you know, I know that we're not supposed to be talking to the group, but I have conversations with the group as well. I think this is too big an issue not to, by the way. Uh, this is talking about, obviously, seven hundred jobs, and, you know, the, the ripple effects throughout our community are gonna be enormous. Um, the thirty-day notice has to be addressed immediately, and we acted on that very quickly. Um, and I know the group is petitioning the bankruptcy court about that. Um, the, there's not gonna be any way around this, we're gonna need help with the lease, and we're gonna need help with the concessions from the union. Uh, I, I think that the group has already come to that realization. Um, that's, that's how this is gonna happen, because, as you mentioned, the, without a plan and without a pro forma of the, of the, um, financials, and, and I'm even saying publicly right now, when we look at those financials, we're not gonna be, we're not hospital administrators, and we, we don't know what's profitable in a hospital. We may, before we commit any dollars, have to hire somebody to look at that. Somebody in hospital administration, a forensic accountant, whatever we need to do before we commit that money. I, and I know we'll do that, and we'll do our due diligence as a board, but that needs to happen as well. Um, I think that, um, I, I, I know you've talked to them, but in, in the community, there's hope, but I think it's tempered. Um, I, I, I've talked to a lot of nurses, as you have, and I've talked to, um, one individual in, in janitorial services. They're worried, but they're cautiously optimistic, uh, just as we are. We know that what it takes to run that hospital on a month-to-month basis is millions of dollars. We just don't know those numbers exact quite yet, because as you mentioned, a lot of that is tied to Stewart and executive costs and all these different things. So I think those numbers are skewed, we just don't know how much. It's gonna come down to the dollars in a sense of if this group can show that this is profitable over a three-month period, hopefully. Let's hope a three-month period, maybe longer. You can, you can, the group can either form and take it over long-term, or we can, uh, market this to a UPMC, or a Cleveland Clinic, or, um, you know, University Hospital, or, or somebody like that. So I think there, there is that window, and we have a real chance here of making this, um, something special. Uh, but it's gonna take a financial commitment, it's gonna take a commitment on, on behalf of a lot of stakeholders in this community. And obviously, that group, and before, before, I don't have to say this, but before anything, we have to get that pro forma, and we have to get that plan, uh, because we have to know exactly what we're investing into. The last thing we wanna do is expend public dollars for a three-month dump, you know, and that's not what we're here to do. So, um, again, cautiously optimistic, and, uh, keep our fingers crossed and make sure that group continues to push and continues to, um, uncover what they can, so that we can, not just us, but the City of Warren, other investors can look at this and say, yes, this is a solid plan.
Okay, Martha Yoder, if you want an update on your end.
Sure, um, I'll talk about a couple of things, but I'll, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. I'll talk first about the plan and the need for me or someone to get that plan to Attorney Rogers. Um, Attorney Danzo, um, had reached out to her after last, the, the meeting on Friday. Um, I happened to be talking to her about some other issues, which we'll talk about later, ARPA stuff. Um, and I talked to her and gave her a brief overview of the situation. She requested at that time some facts and figures with regard to how many the hospital serves, the number of employees, the ideas of the, um, of, of the behavioral health issues, those things. Um, I reached out to Cindy Russo from Stewart to get that information and pass that along this morning to Attorney Rogers. And I believe that I also sent, she had emailed all of, all of us, and I responded, I do know that she's read that, or at least read the email. So I do know that she has that. Um, another thing that we talked about was eligibility, but also making sure that we're not throwing good money after bad. We've said that a lot, and I think if she could have a copy of the plan, that would be very helpful as she's looking at things. So if I can make, if you, someone will make sure that I have a copy of that. Um, as far as, that's as far as I've gone with the ARPA money. I don't know if you wanna talk about available ARPA money and what we have, I can do that, um, but it, we could, or we can save that for one.
I don't think that's, I don't think we need to get into that yet.
Okay, that's mine.
I would like to hear about the, if we have any more movement. I know there's been some emails, um, from Mr. Danzo, if he can maybe address the emails that he sent.
And we can waive privilege, that he can speak to.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Bill Danto, Prosecutor's Office, uh, like Auditor Yoder said, that after the meeting on Friday, I did reach out to a number of the people that were discussed and that we talked about in that meeting. Um, Tanya Rogers was one of them, obviously, she had sent some preliminary information over on the ARPA funding availability. Likewise, I spoke, or I sent an email to Frank Galucci, uh, who has also sent, uh, some preliminary responses. I think you guys were, were copied in on those as well. Uh, he's, of course, uh, one of our lead attorneys on the opioid settlements, the opioid litigation. And, and, and I know it was a little bit of a point of contention in the meeting on Friday, but he also has been involved with the One Ohio process as well through the state. Um, so he was able to give, you know, a little bit of guidance even on that, on that end of it. Um, I, I think that the takeaway for all of them is sort of as we have talked before, you know, the county's only able to spend public funds on purposes that are specifically, uh, outlined by law. And all of this comes down to the nuance of what exactly are we going to be paying for? Because that makes a difference, how we use each one of these independent funds. So for example, um, using just the One Ohio agreement and MOU as, as sort of the guideline for opioid funds, uh, you know, we have Exhibit A, I believe it is, to that MOU that describes the uses. It, it's not necessarily legally sufficient just to say, we think that this is money that's available, so we wanna use it. We have to be able to explain, how does that fit within these permissible uses of the opioid funding? And again, though One Ohio is a little bit different, it is sort of, as I understand, the measuring stick for how all of the opioid funds are spent. And that includes our Giant Eagle, I think it was, one of them was a Giant Eagle settlement, there's been a number of other settlements along, right, I'm sorry. I don't wanna misspeak on those, but, um, you know, the settlements that have happened are sort of judged by that same measuring stick, as I understand it. So, uh, you know, much like with the ARPA funding, we're not going to be able to just say, well, ARPA, let's just use it. How does it fit within the ARPA guidelines? And again, Attorney Galucci on the opioid end, uh, Attorney Rogers on the ARPA end, they seem to be willing and ready to help advise on those issues as they come about. Uh, I also had, I think the board's aware, I, I, I had talked with, um, the county's bond council, who we retain to do all public financing, our, our own improvement financing bonds and such. Uh, Attorney Bechler is, is, uh, very sharp when it comes to public financing. And, you know, our conversation was more just to start the ball rolling of, hey, have you ever encountered something like this? Have you ever thought about an issue like this? And just kind of, you know, I, I could even over the phone, I think here is, is brain turning. There's some, some things that I think he might be able to advise you guys on too, as far as the public financing and what's lawful, what's not lawful. And again, you know, it depends on, it depends on how you guys want to structure this, what funds it comes from. You know, there's, there's some things that you can do with non-tax revenue, for example, that you can't do with tax revenue. There's, there's constitutional restrictions on backing public, or, or backing, um, private enterprise with public funds. So, these are all the moving parts, and I, I think that there's openings in each one of these, perhaps, if you guys, you know, move it. I think then it's a question of, you know, are you satisfied with the plan? Do you guys believe that this is a cause that you can get behind? And if so, then what funds are available in a sufficient amount? And then we, we try to focus and hone in on the lawful expenditures from those funds. And then, uh, you know, hopefully, that can all be done in a relatively quick period of time. Again, everyone that I made contact with on behalf of the board appeared to be willing and ready to help out with giving any advice that they can. So, I, I'm optimistic that we can get those answers if we need to, and I, I'm optimistic that we can get them relatively quickly.
Good to know.
That's just, we need to be right, we don't wanna be the weak link.
No.
When things happen and then.
And, and, and I do say, I will say this, I don't think we're even in this position. If we and the City of Warren didn't step up to the plate, and I'm not patting ourselves on the back here, but if we didn't step up to the plate and commit funding, because when they go to this bankruptcy judge with that, that, that the county and the city have committed barring it, you know, barring that it's legal and all that, but they're going with something in their hand, that group is. And, and I think that, that goes a long way.
Bill, one other thing to look and add to your list is, possibility came up, if there was a financial institution that loaned the whole thirty million. Um, there's been talks of that, a zero-interest loan for this to happen, um, but they need backing, you know, in case it were to, um.
Kinda like a co-sign, yeah.
That's basically right.
So, they asked if the county, if instead, in lieu of us giving the three million, could we just put that three million on reserve in case that were to happen? And, and if they don't need our money, and that loan is able to bridge them through, and then they're profitable after three months on their own without our money, all we did is a insurance policy, basically, you know, where we jump-started the process. Um, it, it, look at the legality of that. They had initially said, we can do it, but we need government backing on this, so whether it be the state, the county, or the city, someone needs to back this thirty million, and we said, of course, that's not gonna happen, you know, not with us and.
Yeah, and I think the same things apply there, you know, whether it's actually giving the money, or it's a guarantee of the money. I think that the same things apply when you have to look at, again, are we going to be violating the constitutional provisions against lending our aid and credit to private enterprise? Um, you know, there are exceptions to that in certain job retention and economic development categories. There's, so, there's a lot of moving parts even to that, and I think that, um, you know, even from the, the perspective of if you encumber that, or if you, if you pledge to, to, uh, back that kind of a loan, do we have to get into a point where, like with an indemnification provision, we have to encumber that money and set it aside and not spend it on anything else, uh, in the meantime? There's, there's a lot of moving parts, and I think with guaranteeing loans, that's one where I would encourage you guys to work with Attorney Bechler, our, our bond counsel, because there are a number of sections in the revised code that deal with specifically even, I, I think, um, hospital improvement bonds, some guarantees that are, that are, that are built in. We don't regularly use them here in Trumbull County, and we've done it a little differently even in, I believe there's been the case of a couple nursing home facilities and, and types of things that have come through over the years, but we don't back those. We're a pass-through of the funds in a sense, under, I think it's Chapter one sixty-one, maybe. But there's a, we don't, we don't guarantee them, and this would be a difference here if we were actually going to be guaranteeing any sort of loan. So again, I, I think if that's something that you guys wanna explore, we can, we can take a look at it, but it's, I, I think as you go forward, I would almost try to think of guaranteeing a loan being almost the same as spending the money. You're, you're putting your, your county's finances on the line for it one way or the other.
So we, uh, are we already engaged with this Bechler law firm, so we don't have to do anything?
It's our current bond.
Okay, so we can talk to him, we have permission to talk to him on these issues?
Trumbull County's already a client of his. The only thing that he may want from the board is, he sort of mentioned, obviously, they have to do a conflict check to make sure they don't have anything to do with any of these other entities. He doesn't believe they do, um, but beyond that, if, if he wanted just sort of a letter or a, or resolution expanding the scope beyond the traditional bond council role, that would be all that would be required, wouldn't be anything difficult. And to that end, I would say, even with, uh, the law firm, and I know it would be for the limited scope of preparing the objection, I think it would be appropriate for you guys to actually pass a resolution approving the, the letter and your signature on that. Uh, but I think the same thing would be for Mr. Bechler, if anything, and I'm not sure he even needs that in this case.
Okay, Lisa, we can put that on for tomorrow, that, what we said there? And then if we can also put on there, um, do we need to put that on there for me to be able to talk to them about expanding the scope of those things there, or agree on that?
I could try to reach out to him this afternoon and see if he needs that or not. He, like I said, he may not, but if, worst case, that would.
Permission to be able to talk to him about this stuff?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Before I forget, I'd also like to add, not to change the subject, but, um, I, I know we got, I think we all got the email from Senator Brown's office, Senator Sheriff Brown's office. Uh, there's gonna be a community discussion on Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, which is tomorrow, at one o'clock at the Lean Foundation. Um, Senator Brown's, um, will, will be in attendance, I believe. And, um, this is to talk about leveraging and, and, you know, looking at different funding sources from the federal level potentially, um, and what we can do, uh, from that aspect, so that's an important meeting as well.
One thing I forgot to mention too, is that along the way, there was one suggestion from someone that we could potentially also look at CDBG funding.
Yes.
And I don't, uh, I, I, clearly, I'm not an expert in CDBG funding, I talked to Julie and Nick at the Planning Commission. They would have a lot more idea of, of what even might be available there, or how that would work. But again, if that's something you guys wanna explore, it's another path that we could potentially look to.
Attorney Rogers mentioned that too.
Is that who it was? Okay.
Yes.
In her opinion.
Her preliminary opinion, sorry.
Um, historically, we've attempted to assist entities located within the city limits. The, because of a balanced state grantee, the state of Ohio has stated that we cannot use the funds that we would typically get through the county.
But we used it on this facility, remember, on our administration building, did we use CDBG funding?
Right, right. We didn't use it on the administration building, we used it for sidewalks.
That's right.
Right. So, that was one of the years, but one of the last years, because we also used to fund the St. Vincent de Paul Society.
Yes, yes.
We've done a number of projects in the city, and then the state decided, well, they're an entitlement. We don't feel that it's appropriate for the county being a balanced state grantee to use their funds inside the city stronger. That's one of a number of things that have changed over the years since this program began. That being said, I believe the city receives CDBG and home dollars that potentially they could inquire about, I believe, right around three million dollars, year or every two years. Um, I know that, you know, Michael Keys or Lori LaMasters, and I'm not sure, you know, for our pot of money, commissioners historically have allowed the use of CDBG funds for doing improvements to these nonprofit buildings. I'm not sure if this situation would also be eligible because it sounds like it's going to be for profit, is that correct?
No, no, the group is a non-for-profit, that's.
But, but Martha, just a second, the group is, but, um, I'm not sure that the owner of the building is. And I don't know if that makes a difference, because the buildings are not owned by, directly by Stewart. They're owned by a separate, for, company called MPT, and so I'm not sure. What we're, what this group is looking at doing is, um, acquiring the hospital enterprise itself, which is the business portion, not the building at all, um. not the building at all. There's a lease and there would be a lease in place. And that's part of the moving parts of the plan, is that MPT would absolutely rather see the building occupied than empty.
Right.
And they're willing, but they're still working on negotiations on that of forgiving some of that, of, you know, allowing them some, some time to, you know, to, to be in there. But that's still a moving part.
Right.
All right. So we'll keep, I mean, this is rapidly moving. I said, we worked through the weekend, even on Sunday, all afternoon and into the evening with calls and stuff. So this is something that we're all working as hard as we can to get this thing done, and nobody's overlooking it. And then, last thing that I have on my agenda, Commissioner, I'd like to ask your permission to have Lisa put on another agenda item tomorrow. And this would be to, to fulfill, as per our contract, a notification of Buckeye Energy breaking, or, or a non-renewal. Or they, they wanted us to renew now with six months' notice. And if we don't do it at this meeting, we're going to be locked into penalties. So, I want a notification of Buckeye of non-renewal, as per what the wording of the contract is, or however we need to word it. Doesn't mean we can't renew with them. It just means it gets us out of that penalty phase of if we decide next week or next month to go with somebody else, or to renew with him, we have the option to do that.
Is this for the aggregation program?
Yes, for the aggregation program. And this gives us more time to meet with him, to give him a fair shot to come in, as we had the, the presentation last week from CCAO. And then we can make our judgment on who we're going, which aggregation program we're going to sign up for in the future. But at the very least, I think we need to do the letter of non-renewal per the wording of what his contract is, the escape clause. And then, of course, notify Mr. Belish that this doesn't mean he's out, it doesn't mean we're done with him. It just means we're getting more time to fairly look at the big picture of things and compare as best we can on which direction we're going to go in the future.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
So Sherrod can help us with that. I think she's got the wording of that. Mr. Danzo, if you can look at that too sometime today to make sure we get the wording correct on that for tomorrow.
Sure.
Can I proceed?
Sure, yeah.
Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Before I proceed into ARPA, as the coroner mentioned, we have some issues. He talked about the issue with Trumbull closing and some potentially closing, and the impact on some of our county services. One of the things that has come up is our nine-one-one center, the electric is still connected with Hillside. You know, we own the nine-one-one center. It was acquired from Hillside, so, but the electric was never separated. The current situation with that is that Stewart pays the bill and then bills us for our usage. The cost to separate the two, which has been investigated and talked about in the past, was at that time a hundred and eighty thousand. Probably much more today, probably somewhere between two hundred to two twenty-five. Not sure, given that we are actively going to change where we have nine-one-one, that that's the best for us in the long term. Something to note is that I, I, that I haven't noted yet, is that per the fire chief in Holland and probably the fire marshal, electric must be kept to the building at Hillside. There's a fire suppression system, electric and water. There's a fire suppression, suppression system there. It has to have electric. There has to be water. Also, as I noted when the coroner was speaking, someone will be in that building from Stewart. I'm not sure if it's going to be from Stewart or from the landlord, from MPT, for thirty days past the closure date, which does give us a little bit of time to sort of work some of this out. My thought on the electric part is that we could try to work out with MPT, the owner of the building, to have the electric for both the Hillside building and the nine-one-one center put into the county's name, and then we would bill MPT. That would give us some control over what's going on. We would know that we had, we had power. There were, there's some, probably some liability and legal issues that are going to have to be worked out. And what I want today from the board is consent from the majority to work out those issues, bringing in both Alex for, from the Corso side, and Danzo, just to get all of this worked out so that we can have electric in that, in our nine-one-one center.
I'm fine with it, yes.
The gas, thanks to Lord, is separate. We don't have to worry about that.
Good.
Water and sewer are also currently connected with Hillside. Water is currently Warren, Warren City. Sewer is currently the county. Gary and I discussed this last Thursday when all of this came down. And Gary has come up with a plan that should cost us about twenty thousand max to be able to do that. I do think, although we are getting, at some point getting out of that building, I think that, given that it's in the grand scheme of things, twenty thousand is not very much. And he feels that will be the maximum, that we should go forward with it. And I'm going to let Gary explain his plan.
All right. Commissioners, the nine-one-one building is interconnected with the hospital, South Forks Water Service. After investigation, we found out Warren is the water provider there, although Trumbull County does. We do have a main line right there on Holland Wilson Road. That, that service area up through there between us and Warren is sort of, sort of spotty as to who has which property. Now, in order to disconnect the nine-one-one center from the Hillside Hospital, we would need to put in a, a new line into the county system. And I went out there yesterday with Ron Watson, and we can see where the water service is coming into the building along the west side in the basement. And we feel that if we can just key a, a new valve into that service line that's coming over from the hospital to run that out to Holland Wilson Road, we can put in a new service there. And.
With something like that running.
Well, that, it's going to be somewhere, I, I told Martha this morning, and we haven't run numbers on it yet, mainly because of the other utilities. The interappearances from the other utilities are going to be one of the major problems. I can see underground gas there and plenty of underground electric up through that property. And so, I, I am saying somewhere between ten and twenty thousand dollars to get them a water connection. Sewer, they're already connected into our sewer separately. It doesn't have to go through any of the other buildings. And once we get to water them as a water customer, it's just going to be a matter of changing the billing over to Trumbull County from Stewart. Instead of it being Stewart, it's going to be Trumbull County, just for the nine-one-one building. And the bill will be based on the consumption through the new connection.
That's what I was.
That guy sucks, because we know they're leaving out of there. It's not a building we're probably going to use. We're probably going to tear that building down when it's done. And we know there's asbestos in the ceiling.
Well, I think Alex, Dean Jones, Debra Sheen, and Ray Person, that's why we waited so long on this. I mean, I, I spent enough time on the nine-one-one. I think I sent the messages to both of you saying, I know we have a problem. I know that our utilities are tied to there. I knew that. I spent enough time there. I knew. With that being said, that, for everybody's understanding, the reason that I think the board in the past has held off is because we do know that's not our end goal to be there. From my understanding from speaking with the heart, as soon as I had heard that this was tied to, you know, I think he was saying a hundred and eighty thousand to just, to just run electric lines, or whatever the case may have been. So we did know this. I mean, I don't want to say, you know, again.
Just, just one correction.
But we're not trying to be.
We did not know about the water and sewer.
Okay, I agree. Yeah. I knew that some utilities were tied. I did not know the extent of the question.
That was a question that we answered last week. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
But I don't want it to seem like we weren't being proactive by any means, because I was under the understanding that the Board of Commissioners, you know, was of the utmost importance that we got out of that building and that we didn't put more money into a, you know, building that is probably going to be potentially condemnable in ten, fifteen years, right? So, it's just something that we need to address and think about. And obviously, we can't, we can't afford to have nine-one-one services tied to a building that may or may not be around.
I, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor. Absolutely, if we can avoid doing the electric, I think we should. If we can work out a way to do that. But the water and sewer, again, I know it's twenty thousand. I know we're spending money on it. But having it tied over there or trying to pay a bill like we're doing now, I, I, I don't, I just think that it, that's the best case scenario. And again, in this case especially, if the buildings are separated, it's, or if, if, if sewer, if, or if Trumbull continues, it's best for us to have as much separate as we can. I, that's just my, and I think, I don't know how Gary feels, but I just think it's better. We need to have control over, as much as we can, over those utilities. The electric is unfortunate, but I think this, and if you guys are on board, we can let Gary start moving forward with things, and we can allocate the funds and all of that.
But we're still going to be doing the electric with them tomorrow, and we're still continuing with the water.
But.
It'll be the same process, towards getting it over and paying.
Well, first of all, I don't, I don't think anyone knew the water was connected. And this is not something I wanted to bring up, but they are how much in arrears to us?
Uh, yeah, Commissioners Gary and Broughton Sanitary Engineer. My understanding, what is it, forty, forty thousand dollars Stewart owes us for sewer bill? They also owe Warren for water, and we're not sure of that amount.
Right. I just, it.
So it may be high time.
Yeah, the electric, the electric, if we take that over, if we can do that and take it over, that, that, I, I think that will satisfy until we can get out of there. I, I, I'm just trying to cut our losses here, guys. That's what I'm trying to do. It's not, oh, we can get ahead. I just think if, if, if it wasn't for it being two hundred thousand dollars, I would say, let's get it. I would really, really want that. That, to me, is the best thing for us to be completely separate. If we can't do that, let's cut our losses. Let's not have to worry about whether we're not going to have water and sewer. This assures that we're going to have water and sewer. If we can get the electric in our name, that assures that we have that. That assures that we, you know, this is not a great situation, and sometimes you just have to make the best of a bad situation. I feel like that's the best way.
Well, what, what is the nine-one-one center? What, what's the timeline for them moving somewhere else?
That's another, that's another thing that we need to talk about, obviously. And, and this is not my forte, it's just I've spent so much time, you know, there, onboarding with everybody there. And I've been very involved in the process. So obviously, the feasibility study has, we're not even there yet. I mean, we, we started it, but we have not gotten that back. The nine-one-one is still looking to see their, their boards, their nine-one-one plan. They need that board seated to be able to then even entertain whatever the feasibility study would be able to say, to know where to move. So this is unfortunately, I know what you're thinking, Gary. I was thinking the same thing, you know. Can we just buy time to get us to where we know we want to be and save it? I just don't think we have that time, unfortunately.
And, and I need to speak, Martha Yoder, Trumbull County Auditor, I need to speak frankly here as well, because I have been informed that it's Ohio Edison that has pushed a lot for that separation. And my hope is in trying to work, part of working this out, is to work with Ohio Edison to quit pushing us on that so that we can do this, that they can be on board with us. Again, if we tear it down, yes, we've lost twenty grand, but we bought the time for that. If we try to do the electric, that's a lot more money. I just, I'm trying to cut our losses here, guys. That's what I'm trying to do.
So we're, we're two, at least two, three years out at the earliest.
No, no, no.
For nine-one-one? Because it might not be new construction.
If it's not a new building, right.
No, this, Michael for nine-one-one. We, we, we've already, that's in the feasibility study. Michael, there's a building waiting for it, but goes that route, is to be moving them by spring next year. And, and by this time next year, they're in the new building. And that, that's, that's great. There's no more, no use of dragging our feet any further. It's a matter of moving them from one building to the next. If the feasibility shows it's one of the buildings we already have, for them to prepare it, some of them are more prepared than others. If it's the one in Corso above the Health Department, if we go that route, that's almost moving ready, other than a few modifications there that, that we can, we can be moving them quickly.
Then I think we need to sit down with Tacey to round this out. I think we need to sit down with Tacey, figure out where we're at exactly with everything. You're right. I mean, there was three, I think there were three, and then we added a fourth that we were looking into. Some of them are moving ready, some of them are not moving ready. They're, they're, we're looking at, you know, apples to oranges again. And so, also, there comes, guys, again, Board of Commissioners, I'm, I'm tasking you. You know this, you sat down with me in all the conversations that we've had with them. That's going to take way more technology, way more money. We have to procure those items. I mean, this isn't just a, we pick up what we have and put it in the new building. There is still some nuances behind that, Commissioner. And I don't want to, you know, I just want to make sure, stress that, you know.
Well, the first big thing we had is the elevator. We're on a process into that. We've got the dog pound, of course.
Yeah.
And we got nine-one-one. And we talked about bonds, all that type of stuff. And Martha, we talked about, take advantage of it now while the rates are good, while we can do things good. Let's put together, just get it done. I mean, if we're going, it's something we're going to do. And as we're seeing with every other thing we're dealing with, the price is this. Coroner just told us the price is this. If we wait till next year, it goes up conservatively. We don't know what supplies are going to do in the future. Let's lock this stuff down now and not be talk. Let's put some action behind our words.
So my concern is the unreliability and having to, I mean, billing them for the electric, that's one thing. And if we lose out on that, we've lost out on one thing. If we're, if we're down the road and we're trying to bill them for sewer and water, that's even more. Again, trying to cut our losses. I understand not wanting to spend that.
Bill who for electric and bill who for sewer and water?
Stewart. MPT. It'll be MPT. We're going to, if we do, if we keep the electric connection the way that it is, which will, we won't have to pay the two hundred thousand dollars, right? That, we, what we will have to do is work out with MPT, that's what I'm, that's what you guys have tasked me to do, work out with MPT a deal where the electric goes into our name. We bill them for their usage. If we have to do that for water and sewer, that's one more thing that we have to bill for. One more thing that we have to be trusting of them, that they're actually going to pay.
But that is also negotiating toll on our end now, that if, if the hospital is retained by this new group, and MPT has offered, they've already offered to give out a loan and forgive rent, we go to MPT and say, you need to be caught up on this for nine-one-one. You need to separate us as part of the deal, make them pay the hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
I don't think we're going to get that deal.
That's even if it's legal and okay, you know, through, we have to make sure that it's a legal thing to even entertain doing that through MPT, right, taking on a liability of a, again, remember, they're a private entity. That may not be legal for ORC. I don't know.
That's what we need to work out.
We need to work on all of these things. So what I'm saying here is, it's not just as easy as, I, I get what you're saying. But again.
We're trying.
A government entity to, to take over a private, you know, Ohio Edison bill, or a private, whatever it may be, may not even be legal. We have to, we have to experience that.
Right. We have to, we have to look at. And, and once again, you know, we, we're saying twenty grand tops for his solution. That's our high end.
That solves all our water and sewer issues.
Right. And I know that's, like, we do, we want to spend it. But good night, sometimes you just gotta, to just.
I'm just trying to stress, right, that we're good as water and sewer, if we want a lecture.
Well, we're, that's.
Yeah, I mean, all of it, really, but.
Right. I understand. I mean, if you want to hold off, here, the other thing about that solution is it's doable within the timeframe that we have. This, the power, is not doable.
Yeah. So, I guess what I'm hearing, and I guess this is your guys' decision, Commissioners and Auditor, and whatever we need to do collectively, I will, I will gladly be there as well. I really think we need to engage Tacey and/or Patty, or whoever's available, immediately. And we need to sit down and really hash this out, and look at where we're at.
I will say, they've been on all of this, just so you understand. My meeting last week before I talked to anybody else was with Patty, only because Tacey was on the bill.
Yes, I remember that, yeah.
Right? So that meeting and the emails that have gone back and forth between us and Gary, all of that, they, both Tacey and Patty, so they're not in the dark. I would not have done that.
No, no, I, it's not that, Martha. I'm actually saying about the, the ongoing, yeah, so looking at how long, where, you know, where we're headed.
The feasibility. Sure, absolutely. And they also know that, they also know that I'm here talking today. But, um.
No, I know you would never.
And, and I understand the Commissioners don't want to make a decision today with regard to the water and sewer. But again, tick tock, tick tock.
Well, again, you, what we're saying though, long-term, is that, well, what we're saying right now, immediate term, is that we are going to have to make a decision on water and sewer and electric, one way, shape, or form. That's what we're saying.
Absolutely.
So, let's meet with Tacey and Patty collectively. Let's figure out to get your questions answered ASAP, what we're looking at with the feasibility study. what we're looking at with the feasibility study, what we're looking at, um, as far as timelines, realistic timelines, and then maybe that can help you make an informed decision on what you would like to do with the water.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. The realistic is important.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, I'm the most, I'm probably the most optimistic person in this building. But I have a dash of realism because life has kicked my ass a few times. So...
We have to be. We have to be. We're doing what safety services, whether it's nine one one or healthcare, whatever it may be, we have to be realistic.
Absolutely. So I'm perfect, I am perfectly willing to, to wrangle everybody in and talk about this, but I would like, still like permission to go ahead and move forward with the electric stuff to try to get, figure out if that's feasible. All right? Thank you.
Sounds good.
Now, ARPA. Um, eligible, ineligible, and update. Uh, we have everything that was pending last week still there except for Hubbard City. Hubbard City withdrew their fifteen thousand dollar request because they did not feel that they could provide the information by Attorney Rogers. They did receive a three hundred thousand dollar award for that generator for the wastewater, I can't remember. Um, do you want the fifteen grand frozen, or do you want me to just pull that off?
Pull off.
All right.
Who is it again?
Hubbard City. They just got three hundred thousand.
Okay, yeah.
All right. All right. Um, I reached out to Gus Davis and Hubbard, giving them the deadline for new requests for their frozen money. I CC Julie Green, uh, per her offer of assistance last week. Julie has requested the legal opinions on the denied request. May I re, may I release tho, these along with any others she may have?
Yes.
All right. You way privileged, sir?
Yes.
Right. Gary Schaefer and I spoke yesterday and today about the three road projects that we have frozen money for. The agreement is in process for Bazetta, that's a hundred thousand. I spoke to Mike Davis from Farmington Township about the road project. He's working with the engineer, uh, for a road project that wasn't the one that was initially requested, but the amount is the same, the idea is the same. It's a hundred thousand dollars. Mespo, Mespetania is a little further behind, but has had communications with the engineer's office on a potential one. They have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars frozen. I do need confirmation for you, just to make sure everything's clear, that, uh, because before they actually drew up, drew up, dropped any agreements for Mespo and Farmington, that your intent is to use the ARPA in those frozen amounts, which are already on your spreadsheet for those projects. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, just also to let you know, it's not on your notes here. But one of the questions that I had answered yesterday with, uh, Attorney Rogers is that when we pass those agreements between the county, the county engineer, and, I'm sorry, the county Commissioners, county engineer, and the township, those act as the obligation per the twelfth, uh, for the, uh, prior to the twelve thirty one twenty four. So once you guys enter those agreements, that money is obligated, that, which we have to do between, before twelve thirty one twenty four. I am going to work very diligently to try to nudge people along. Right, you were given a yes sheet, and there's the bottom line spreadsheet. The total available is a little off now because we've taken that fif, fifteen thousand dollars more now. That is it, unless you have questions.
Martha, did you cover the nine one one and EMA MOU too? Wanna bring that up?
Um, we can talk about that. Um, nine one one has a, a request that, that has money allocated on the allocation sheet that you guys do not have in front of you, and neither do I, because I printed it and didn't bring it up. Uh, and also EMA has the mobile command unit. I have been kind of reaching out to both Mr. Hickey and, um, Tacey, but Tacey, of course, is kind of busy putting out fires. And so we haven't kind of gotten those on the agenda, the quotes or any of that. What we would like to do is, um, we're, Julie and I reach out to both of them and sort of work on those MOUs, the interagency agreements, like what we've done with, or we're, are in the process of doing with sanitary. Are you guys all right with that?
Oh, yeah.
So that way we can get that money obligated. Right? Thank you. Thank you for the...
And all the, all the related...
Right. Anything, well, that's kind of, I can kind of cover that.
Okay.
Every, anything that Julie needs now, I can give to her, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. All I need to do...
Putting money?
No. I will give you a large pat on the back.
Okay, one, one last thing on ARPA before we close this. I believe it was the last meeting, we approved Hubbard, um, Fowler Township, and there was one other one, check presentation we gave here.
Uh, don't ask me. I can't remember off the top of my head. Sorry.
What was the check that we gave last time?
Hubbard, Moss, Gen Center?
No.
No.
Oh. I'm drawing a blank. Kinsman? No?
No, was it your veterans, or was it another one before that?
Hubbard?
No.
Veterans outreach?
We had three last week.
Hold on, I'm pulling, trying to pull the...
And one, one was in attendance, and we did the check presentation with the photographs.
Oh, that's...
Was that up? Was that up?
Hold on.
Was not.
I'm looking.
I don't remember.
I'm trying to find the, um... Right, I'm trying to find the agenda from last week, so, hold on.
Was that the date at eight twenty?
Yeah. All right. So last week... It must've been the week before. Must've been the week before. They're all bending together, blending together now, unfortunately. The draft. Eastgate?
Eastgate.
Oh, yeah, broadband.
Broadband, okay. Well, we had the checks for Fowler Township, made the checks for Hubbard City, and Commissioner Frenchco took them home with her. And one of them, you didn't even have your signature on it yet, and she was at the elevator. Our clerk told her, Commissioner, what are you doing with that? She got on the elevator and left with them. So I talked to the mayor of Hubbard. He's not gonna receive anything until the, a meeting that he schedules with all three Commissioners. He'll do a photo op. I talked to Fowler Township trustees, advised them. She left with the check. They said they're not gonna meet with her on their own, and thus there's, there's an open thing where the three of us are invited to be there. And I would ask publicly for Commissioner Frenchco to bring the freaking checks back. I mean, we paid eighteen bucks apiece for those things. All she had to do was sign them when we said that we would present them. We went to schedule the meetings, and she took them. And which why she took them on her own, I have no idea. Um, that's something that the Board of Commissioners appropriated and said that we would be delivering the checks at a later date. That should be something all three of us have the opportunity to do. So I would again, again ask tomorrow, and I'll ask her tomorrow if she's not here, why did you take the checks home with you? And where are they? Bring them back so that we can, I've got meetings scheduled with both of them, where they've agreed to, to, uh, receive the checks from all three of us and invite all three of us to be there. So I don't wanna have to make up another check and do it, but, you know, the thirty six dollars, I mean, it's thirty six bucks. Bring them back so we can, uh, deliver them as Board of Commissioners and not, or renegade, just taking them with her and whatever. I have no idea what she's gonna do with them. Wallpaper garage or so, I don't know. Do them on her own or something and say she did it? I don't know. But it was stupid for her to take them on her own. Okay, so that's all I have with that, and, um, I did get a call in, in other words of, as we're going over the hospital stuff, I talked to, uh, um, the Warren, Warren City, and I got a notification today from the law director and safety director. They still don't have the jail contract back that they gave us in May. They said they signed it in May, sent it over to us, and they said, hey, we need it. Are we under contract with the jail? Will we sign it?
Chrissy sent it over this morning.
This morning?
Yes.
Okay, you got the same message. Thank you for doing that. All right, they had to question that, so that's done. We will be meeting the sheriff, talking about, uh, Alex and I have a meeting with the sheriff next to talk about parking in general, the big picture of parking. So I apologize to everybody waiting on the parking lot thing. There was, uh, some talks last week. Um, just public disclosure, I had Mr. Valeski about, um, the lease of the parking, and I, I said, I said, hey, do you wanna sell it, sell it to us? Some of us leasing it off you in five year increments. Why don't you just sell us that lot, that, those twenty eight spots? Break it off, you know, we'll rezone, re, or reallocate it or whatever with the Auditor's Office, and we'll just buy it from you. Uh, he didn't have an interest in that, but then he called me back and said he would entertain us making an offer of buying the whole thing off of him with frontage on both streets and the building and all the parking behind the fence, and not just the lots that we have. But to do that, you know, public disclosure, he said we'd have to, we'd have to talk, um, six figures, starting with a five. So we're, we're paying about ninety thousand a year in rent, which would be three hundred some thousand over the, you know, or almost that amount, I should say, well, fifteen thousand a year, I'm sorry. Over the life of the turn, it would be over a hundred thousand. It would be a lot to, to get to that point. We'd have to lease that for the next twenty years or whatever, to hit that amount. Uh, or it could be, like you said, if we utilize the other parking and sold the building, whatever, we have no desire, no need for another building, uh, on High Street. So, but the offer was there, so I brought it up, you know, but there was, he didn't have an interest in just selling us the lot, part that we're interested in leasing. We're gonna talk to the sheriff about the whole big picture of things, with the hospital things and everything that's going on right, right this second. Unfortunately, parking thing's gotta be bumped a week back, and that's, uh, all of our time has been taken with this hospital over the last week, and I don't think it'd be responsible for us to make a decision right now or move forward with that, and I don't think it'd be favorable right now, so...
Well, and Commissioner, I think, also Commissioner Kean always, I, I've talked to him separately, not with you, just so everybody's clear. I think that we owe it to the county. I think we, there's other things that we should be looking at first and ways to speak with the sheriff, ways to speak with other people, and maybe reconfiguring where they park and don't park, so on and so forth, before we even entertain.
Well, that's what the meeting is today, and I hope we make progress out of that, and we'll be able to make a more sound decision, big picture decision, potentially next week, we can, we can look at this. And I know that's not gonna sit well with everybody, and, and I know there's employees that are still walking far now, and I watched staff walking again today from the back, and it's gonna be ninety some degrees, and we do have elderly people that are walking a long ways to do that. And, you know, there's, there's things we need to do, including enforcing the parking laws that we have right now, free up spaces sooner, and not allow people to park in spots, handicap more than four hours or non-handicap more than two. So we need to work with everything to make sure that we turn over these spots and open them up as quick as we can and provide more parking from what we have right now. But I still want the parking lot lease behind it, but we, to get to that point with the terms is something we need to do.
Anything else?
Okay. Sir, do you have anything?
I was just curious, uh, Chief Senator, you was with Fire District, um, our application for the ARPA is on the death of, uh, Bonnie Rogers.
Correct. That's correct.
I was just curious, Steve, the, uh, money is still available. You guys are deciding on whether to give the money to the hospital or...
No, no, it's still available. We haven't talked about any of that.
No, no decision, and they've not made any decision, and, um...
And even if we did make a decision, the ones that are pending right now, we're not gonna bump ones that are waiting for money if that happens.
Okay.
You don't, you don't have any jeopardy of that.
Yeah, I was trying to stop the saltwater here. I just wanted to make sure.
Appreciate that. Thank you for, for coming and asking. Anybody have anything else? Really good. At least I'm sorry to put so much on your plate with all these new extra things you have to do today.
Okay. No problem. Get it done.
Like emotional jerk? What do we need, Karen?
I just wanted to congratulate you on your meatballing contest victory.
Oh, yeah.
The male champion. Thank you.
It was fun. It was nice. It, it ended up being a good event. I tried to encourage more people to attend and participate, maybe next year. Good event. Good time.
Congratulations. Okay.
Emotional jerk.
Second.
Mr. Cuslin Mesa?
Yes.
Mr. Malloy?
Yes.